Oh, thank you.
You shouldn't have to touch it now.
Okay, thank you. One minute. Good afternoon and welcome to the special school board meeting this Tuesday, April 13th, 2021. This is a special meeting called to hear the issues of the exceptions that have been filed by Joy Deal to these hearing officers recommended order. The public is permitted to speak during this school board meeting, and they make general comments prior to the board's consideration of the agenda items and again prior to the board considering Agenda Item 49. Additionally, the public may comment regarding each specific agenda item. If you wish to address the board, please pick up a card in the back of the chambers and print your name and topic clearly and return the card to our assistant. Unlike other board meetings, you will be able to address item by item as they come up. I would, if you know you're going to be speaking on one, I would appreciate it if you could go ahead and fill that out ahead of time so we don't have to wait for the cards to be filled out after each of the 49 items. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak, and when the timer flashes yellow, one minute remains, and you need to begin to summarize. You must stop speaking when the buzzer rings. Please note that respect for divergent viewpoints and civility will be shown at every board meeting, and whether you agree or disagree with the speaker, you should listen politely and respectfully without making any sounds of approval or disapproval, including clapping. The board members are here to listen to you. This is not a time for debate, and the board will not take any formal action on your comments unless your comments relate to an agenda item. If your comments relate to a non-agenda item, the board may refer the matter to staff for a report prior to the board's next meeting. The school board is committed to civility and decorum at the conduct of its meetings, and please assist us in maintaining a civil and constructive meeting environment by confining your comments to the issues and refraining from temperate or rude remarks. We do have one person to speak, not on the issues before us, but on general comments regarding masks, Teresa DeWitt.
I apologize. I didn't know that it had to be according to the agenda, so...
Yeah, this is sort of like a hearing on an issue.
Okay. I looked online for the agenda, and I couldn't get the items. So can I just say a positive report? Or do you want me to have...
You're here, go ahead.
Okay. So I wanted to thank the board and the extended administration for allowing my twins to get additional services. They were basically, two years ago, non-verbal, and the services that the school board has approved, my children are on their grade level, so they're going to be starting, and the teachers have been amazing. So anyway, I wanted to thank you guys. Also, too, I was told that the board approved for them to get summer services to continue that, so they'll stay caught up. So I really appreciate it. And I was going to speak on mask from a perspective of a psychiatrist, I mean, sorry, a family therapist. I've been one for 18 years, and I've worked from everywhere, from in the home to psychiatric hospital to school setting. So when it's appropriate, I'll come back next week and talk about that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, it's fine.
We will, at this time, take opening remarks from Ms. Joy Deal. And you need to push the button and make sure their little red light is on.
I think he did that. Can you hear me?
Speak into the mic.
Okay, I'll try. Can you hear me? Okay, thank you. Well, I've been called to this meeting today from the school board to discuss the hearing that was held via Zoom in November, I guess it was. Any rate, so Judge Desai has recommended for me to be suspended, or means be fired from the school board. I have to say that this has been an unbelievable chain of events from the day one of these proceedings. And there's been so much, and that it's hard to get into without the agenda items because they are individual. I can say that I have always maintained from day one that I am the victim here from a verbal attack of a student who was, I never got any kind of support from my administration, even though I did tell them right away, right away, because I was asked to do that in a previous meeting. So I did immediately tell Becky Meyer that this had happened. She was going to follow up. I do have proof of that. Of course, it wasn't admitted to the, there was a lot that wasn't admitted because I cut the hearing short. I was being, I feel harassed. It was one-sided. They weren't listening to me at all. Mr. Robinson continually, continually objected to every single question I asked, no matter what it was. So I wasn't getting anywhere. Frustrated as I was, I just said, "We're ending this. I'm not going to sit here for three days and just be objected to," a time after time after time, which is what the case was. Judge Desai gave me very little support as well. She was very biased in her opinions, and I can, we're going to touch on some of that with these agenda items. I feel like David Jones has harassed me since day one of his return to Sarasota High. I did not have these issues. I had one issue with Jeff Aradik in 2010. And the other, the other things that Jeff and I spoke about were almost just on a personal level. I mean, you don't even have agenda items. You don't have meeting minutes. You don't have anything from his and I's conversation in his office. So when he asked me, and that's also in the minutes from the hearing, when he asked me to comment for memorandum of instruction or just to comment, and, you know, this meeting could be considered disciplinarian in nature, so please bring your union rep. What, you know, we did all that. However, there was never any, Jeff was not real astute about minutes, meetings, that kind of thing. So him and I, we bumped heads. I mean, you're not going to get along with everybody you work with. And I think that goes for all of us, and I don't think there's a person sitting in this room that can say you've always gotten along with every single person you've ever worked with. Jeff and I bumped heads for 10 years, but we got along. I mean, it was one of those, you know, love-hate kind of things. And Jeff even supported me in his testimony to the point where he said, "I worked in the ESE department for six or seven years." And all of you are familiar with ESE students. They're very irrational, sometimes. They blurt out. They're very emotional students. They're, I have never been, in this morning's paper, I was flabbergasted because I was depicted as someone who literally picked on a handicapped child. I worked with these children for six years, and I was never mean to a child. The young lady that this whole entire thing is supposed to have stemmed from, Janisha Burks, didn't even bother to show up to the hearing. She was not even, she was, you see, she was subpoenaed a couple of times, never showed, didn't even bother to show up. If she was so distraught and so hurt and so, as the petitioner claims, why didn't she even show up to the hearing to defend that? She, she has been in trouble since elementary school. She has over 50 referrals in our system. I don't believe that we did her any justice, to be honest with you. I think we could have, like this lady here, I was very happy to see that we provided services for her twins. That makes me so happy. It should make everybody here happy that we actually have accomplished that for her and her family. I, the ESE, that is really flabbergasting. It's very slanderous. I've never been mean to a child. And Janisha Burks has been, has had behavioral issues since day one of her schooling with us. And it's in our record. I mean, you can pull it. It's fine. You can. I've had people, or we've pulled it before. Even after our incident, which her behavior, I was told by the clinic aide, it's all in the minutes, I was told by her to call security. Now, why would someone, if I'm being mean to them, why would another adult ask me to call security to get, to have this child removed, which is my right in the bargaining unit agreement as well, as the floor statutes, to remove unruly children from your, from your area, and just for the administration to hunt her down and have her make a statement against me? This is harassment, plain and simple. David Jones has done this since day one. He took me out of a position from ESE that I had been in, like I mentioned, for six years, seven years. David Jones, when he returned to Sarasota High, which I want you to know, I was his biggest advocate. I really wanted him to return. We all did. And you just got to be, sometimes you got to be careful what you wish for. Because when he returned, immediately, he took me out of that position. And he stated an email to me, and an email to me, "We want to put you back to your salary lane," because I was out of my salary lane, which I never was compensated for, just as an addendum to what I'm saying, for 10 years. I was out of my salary lane. I was above my salary lane as an administrative assistant, to assistant principals, to behavior specialists. I did work way beyond the scope of my bargaining unit agreement position. I was always went above and beyond, always, for these students and for the, for the teachers, their parents, always. I was always above and beyond for all of them. And I had, I was faced with several diverse students with that type of student you're going to be. After David Jones removed me from that position, he says, "I'm putting you back," because he worked for us seven or eight years prior to that, as a math teacher, and then became an assistant principal, and then, you all know, he went through the ranks and came back as a principal. Once he removed me, that position is not an SSP5, which is what I am. He immediately put Jane Bell into that position, and she's an SSP5. Now, if you don't call that harassment, I don't know what harassment is. You're going to remove me of six years doing this job, and Jane Bell, who's the same salary, you're saying you're moving me because of salary things, issues. I'm not in the right lane. However, you're putting somebody else in that lane that's the same salary as I am. Okay, that's not fair at all. Jane Bell always backed up attendance as part of her job originally. I never backed up attendance, so it would only made sense for her to go there, but no, it, no, that didn't happen. I had to go there. So that's why I'm claiming that this harassment. And then, as we started these proceedings, and I had a deposition at Kirk Pinkerton with Mr. Robinson, the first deposition, we're going through, he's asking me questions. He wasn't real happy with my answer. Okay, I, you know, it's my first deposition. I don't, you know, I'm not familiar with the law. I'm not, I'm not a lawyer. And I'm not trying to be a lawyer, even though I was forced to, because I can't afford one, of course, not at my salary, sorry. But however, he presents a document to me, a last chance agreement. It's got handwriting on it. It says I was under the influence of alcohol. I mean, it's all in the minutes. It's all in the transcript that he put on the docket. He says, "Well, I'm giving you the benefit of the doubt." And he puts this document down that has handwriting on it. It looks nothing like the original agreement that I received from the union. There's so much, I mean, it was obvious copy and paste, and my name was all the way through this document. It was appalling to me. I'd never been under the influence of alcohol in front of any student at Sarasota High School in my 20 years, ever. I worked football games, basketball games, every, every game that we have at Sarasota High, I've worked them multiple times. I've chaperoned grad bash. I have had, I've mentored students. I was a take stock and children advisor to students. I also was a big brother, big sister. I have a long history of cooperating, getting along with children, students. Students love to come to attendance. They love to come there. That wasn't pleasing to the rest of the people, but that's just the way it was. I wasn't happy about the move back to attendance, but I made it a place where people wanted to come. And I also have proof of all that. I just want you to know, I took the liberty of keeping a daily journal after all this harassment began. A union representative, I asked them time and time for film to prove my case. I wanted film from way back, the first harassment situation that I felt I was harassed, when Griffin Holcomb was there, he was the only one that filled out supposedly a witness statement to a, to a situation about locker detail. I won't go into all that, however. But yet, Mark Gilliland, who testified at the hearing, did say he gave his to David Jones. However, when I go to my folder, and I ask for folders from the site folder, from Human Resources, and from the union. Okay, the unions, the only one that had Mark Gilliland's witness statement in it. The site folder had not, no Mark Gilliland, did not have Keatron Strater, who was another assistant principal who also made a statement. And my daughter, who I witnessed almost the entire event, there's no statement in there from her either, and she handwrote a statement and handed it to the officer on duty, the SRO, Devon Epps. Devon Epps was on the witness list for the petitioner, however, was not called. Therefore, he could not, you know, I didn't know. This is kind of a trickery thing, and Judge Desai's like, "Oh, first time lawyers," except I'm not a lawyer, because I wanted to go over on the witnesses, his witnesses list. He also had Barry Dubin, my representative, supposedly, on his witness list. Now, this is the union representative going to testify for the petitioner. Now, if that doesn't sound whack, I don't know. Honestly, that's a little suspect, if you will. I mean, you're going to, and of course, and I honestly believe that part of that article this morning in the paper came from him. I honestly believe it, that, and I, I'm very upset about that whole thing. And if he's here today, I would like to clear that up, clear that statement up, because I've never, there's no proof of any of the things that they're saying in there. They don't have proof at all. And the way that my personnel record was kept, I have papers in there that were anonymous, that weren't signed. I've never seen them before. There's so much stuff that was in this file that I've never seen before. And there is a law against that. You know, you can, I can get it for you, or you can look it up. And there's also, which was part of Judge Desai, she said she counted on the bargaining unit agreement as part of her reasoning for her recommended order, you know. Well, complaints in the bargaining unit agreement, number 19, Article 19B complaints, it says it has to be discussed, nobody ever discussed anything. There's several pieces of paper in there that I'd never seen before that were parent complaints. My name's not even in there. It just says the person in attendance, which could be anybody at that point. Attendance is, the way the attendance was located, it was between actually two other offices and meant, because I've been there for a long time. So we restructured the school, and once the restructuring went, the space that I was in was supposed to be an overflow area for the clinic and for the attendance office, which never came to fruition. The attendance office was the ACE office, it was coordinator's office, it was this office, it was everything but what it was intended for on the blueprint, which was the attendance office. So you sit out here, and they accuse me of not being private with parents and stu, you're in a breezeway. There's doors everywhere. People are coming in and out constantly. There's no, there's no opportunity for a private conversation. You and I couldn't have one. You and I couldn't have one. There's no opportunity for that. I can bring up, I can bring eyewitnesses maybe to the next level. I don't know, to prove that. I even spoke to someone that works here the other day. I said, "Brad," I said, "You been in that area?" I said, "Was there ever a chance for me to have a private conversation?" He said, "No." He said, "Are you kidding me?" I said, "No." I said, "They think I should be able to have a private conversation when I've got 50 students, parents, kids going to the clinic, going to the coordinator's office, teachers coming through to go to the mailroom, because it is also a pass-through for our teacher lounge mail area." This is like a breezeway. There's no possible way you could ever have a private conversation with anyone. And anything that happens in that area, which we had a lot of students that we had seizures and things of that nature, it's not a private thing. They come in, they yell for the nurse. It's like, it's chaotic for a few minutes. If parents are there, they're going to be hearing every word of it. There's, there's no exception there. They will hear every word of it. I, I did my job. I did it. I did it well. I don't know what David Jones' angle was for why he did not like me, but I honestly believe you just can't fire someone because you don't like them. I, I'm a pretty cooperative person. David Jones, who cannot wait for this to be over, was in my office maybe four times, the entire time I was there, for three years. But yet, the person who was there at the time of the incident that we're speaking about with Ms. Burks, the young lady that has had behavioral issues since elementary school, the person who I witnessed this, from the get-go of that incident, was on the witness list, and they never called her. Why would you think that? However, people who weren't even in the area had no eyewitness testimony to it at all. All made their little speculations and did all their little hearsay and, and wrote these witness statements and signed them and did this. I got two different signatures on, on the same witness statement. I got one witness statement that's not signed in the site file, but it was signed in the, the union file. I have so much documentation. I have letters. It's insane, the documentation that I have. I have a lot of it. And if y'all would like to go through it, most of it's in these minutes. Well, not most of it. Some of it is. But specifically, one piece that I can definitely pull out of here for these agenda items will show two different signatures. And it will also show no signature with type, no signature. And then it'll show one with signatures with typos in it. So I just don't think that we've, we've come to a conclusion here that I'm the one that's guilty here of anything. I don't think anyone in this building has, has eyewitnessed one thing that they can attest to. David Jones also testified that we had, there was a film I asked for, and that we pulled up. It was on Mr. Jones' computer. It states in here somewhere that Ryan Chase, of course, he wasn't even at the meeting, but it says he looked at it. Okay, but nobody ever told me that. However, in the minutes of the meeting, myself, Barry Dubin, and David Jones looked at this film, and I was very stoic in it. Even Barry Dubin said, "It doesn't hurt you, but it doesn't help you." I don't even know what that meant. He didn't like me anyway, so we'll just go with that. But I was not flailing. David Jones's testimony says you were flailing your ar, that is perjury. It's a, well, it's alleged perjury. I'll just say that because we don't know. We have archives, and I don't know Mr. Edwards, and I'm not sure, Mr. Asplin has not been here very long. And Patrick, you're new, Mr. Dugan, Duggan, sorry. I don't know how to pronounce it, but I hope I did okay. But, you know, we have an archive system in our email. I had 96,000 emails in my archives, and I took a screenshot of it. I have, like I said, I have documentation of everything. Now, guess how many I have? Like 56,000. They have deleted 40,000 emails in the last two years. However, when you have something saved to this, and if the archives are not tampered with, or allegedly tampered with, or anything of that nature, that email, that film that Becky Meyer did testify also that she would have sent to David Jones should be in those archives. And there's no ifs, ands, or buts about that. I promise you. The archives go way back. I was looking at someone's, and I won't even speculate tell you who, but I'm just going to say, I said, "Oh, let me see something here." They didn't know what I was doing. I pulled it up theirs. They have 101,000 emails. My emails go back to 26, my emails go back to 2012, and then they go up from there. And I have a picture of where it stops at 2018, and then not another email till 2020. So who, someone has deleted all of 2018 on my computer, all of it. That's tampering, is that's alleged tampering, whether it was the school board, whether it was done not maliciously, whatever the case is. I'm just letting you know, I have the proof that I started with 96,000 emails, and I'm down to 54. That is a huge deletion, and it's against the law, and it's against the tampering law, and it's against the conspiracy laws. I have all that down. I just want you to know my complete and total platform before we go on, because that's where I'm coming from. And these folks that are going to say, "Oh, yeah, yeah," well, even Mr. Robinson, and I don't know if you or any of you were sent a copy of this, because I think it was just to Mr. Dugan, who is, like I said... I think it was just to Mr. Duggan, who is, like I said, new, maybe to administrative law, I don't know, that there are rules in administrative law, and this one states conflict, that Mr. Robinson, who was the attorney at the agent, at the hearing, is not even allowed to be here and tell, and say anything in this law today. And I don't know if that was shared with any of you, so I just want to let you know that that is the law, it's right here, it's the, the rules of administrative hearings, and that Mr. Robinson is, but everything in this agenda was a copy and paste from Mr. Robinson's recommended order to the administrative hearing. So, I mean, I don't know if that's even allowed, but it is, it's a copy and paste. And Mr. Duggan did a great job putting it all together, because I did misnumber some things, I was 15 days, I do work a full-time job at facilities, which I love, and I love my job at Sarasota High. I want to stay there 20 years. I'm proud, I promise you, I want to stay there 20 years, so I didn't love my job at Sarasota High. I miss my kids, I miss my teachers, but I don't miss the administration, I will share that with you. But, that's kind of about where I stand as of now, and if anyone wants to see the conflict, I can, I will happily let y'all pass it around or whatever, but Mr. Duggan insists that he has a part in this today, and I'm insisting he does not, and I told Mr. Duggan, I would not, would not entertain, I would not exchange verbiage or anything with him because of this rule that Satan says he's not supposed to be here, or he's not supposed to influence you, he's not supposed to be writing anything, and all this, like I said, is copy and paste from his recommended order. You can, you can look it at yourself, and that's, that's the truth.
All right.
So, before we, so before we begin, I just want that kind of upfront and let y'all know where I'm coming from. And at the next level, they may, they may have a field day with that, I don't know. I'm just, I'm speculating that they might, and I even asked, I, I know I misnumbered, and I did some things on that, because like I said, I worked full-time. I was rushed trying to get the 15 days in, because it was just, it was a lot for me. But I did ask to have that, so I could, I could bring it into compliance with this law here, but at any rate, I was never, and he said that he didn't want to give me advice, I wasn't asking for advice, I just wanted to bring it up to compliance, bring it into compliance, but nothing was ever kind of done with that, so I just kind of.
Thank you. Now, I believe that our agenda items are in the same order you gave them, and I will reference the item, that the line item or the order that you're, you're exempting, you're, you're making an exception to. Do you have a copy of today's agenda?
Of course.
Okay.
I have all my notes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, I just want to comment that I did provide it to Ms. Deal and to Mr. Robinson, so that there was fair treatment to both sides.
And, and could you explain what that was?
The agenda that was distributed today that-
Oh, the agenda, all right.
That contains the recommended orders, Ms. Deal's exceptions, and Mr. Robinson's response. That took some time to put together, once it was complete, and literally as soon as it was complete, it was distributed to Ms. Deal and to Mr. Robinson, so that they would have it, and it was in the same email that it was sent to both of them, so they had the same amount of time, again, because there's two sides here, and I want it to be fair to both sides.
And, and that is the one that if anybody is watching online, it is also displayed in our agenda for the 413 meeting. Mr. Robinson.
Thank you.
This is Mr. Rob Robinson, no, no relation to our former board member, the attorney that has represented the district in this hearing.
Thank you. Again, my name is Rob Robinson, for the record, and for those who do know me, those who have not had the privilege of meeting, I have been representing the administration here at the landings for the past 25 years, doing administrative law and administrative cases such as these. My role in this is to represent the superintendent, who makes recommendations to the board relative to either the termination or suspension without pay of employees. That also involves working closely with the principal from where the employee may have come from, and in this case, I had the privilege of working with David Jones at Sarasota High School. Mr. Jones acted as the district representative with me during the conduct of the hearing, and I believe he's sitting directly behind me. It was Mr. Jones also that made the initial recommendation to the then superintendent for the purpose of proceeding with the termination of Ms. Deal's employment with the district. Today is the culmination of the appeal that Ms. Deal sought based upon that recommendation. This process has gone on for a good long time, and I think it is related to a lot of different factors, including family incidents, and people's health, and COVID, and the inability of the ALJs from Tallahassee to travel, and unfortunately, just took a long time to get to the end of this, but that's where we are today. Because this involved disputed issues of fact, what happens in these cases is they are referred to an agency of the state called DOA, Department of Administrative Hearings. They are assigned a judge, a real live judge who has a robe and functions in the capacity of a judge, we call them ALJs. The allegations, we'll go through those shortly, but they involve what is known as misconduct in office, that is a formal term. Bear in mind that you simply cannot, as a district, terminate employees at will, you must have what is known as just cause. Misconduct in office is one of the many things that are listed as potential reasons why an employee can be terminated. After completion of the hearing, the process that's followed is that both parties submit a proposed recommended order. Bear in mind, the judge in this case does not make a decision, they only make a recommendation to you, and although you are a board, under administrative law, you're known as the agency, the agency that will take final action in this case. Both Ms. Deal and I sent proposed recommended orders to the judge, basically laying out how we thought the case went, and what her order or his order should look like when it's eventually published. The ALJ issued her recommended order on February the 11th, 2021. She made, for your purposes today, there are three things in there that you should be concerned with. One are findings of fact, two are conclusions of law, and the final is the recommendation. There is a section that we're gonna go through today, and some of the exceptions that are what I call the prelude, they're really what you might read in a book that sort of tells you the roadmap of where you're going, but it doesn't really tell you the story. It just basically lays out the what happened and how it happened, but the real story is in the findings of fact, the conclusions of law, and her ultimate recommendation. So with that said, what is your role today as board? I think Mr. Duggan has done a very good job of laying that out. I've had these hearings in front of this board before, but not this board, so some of you may not have been a part of one of these in the past, but we have had them before. I will say the vast majority of these, however, the employee eventually simply accepts the discipline after they are unsuccessful at the hearing stage, and we don't get to this where we actually have 48 listed exceptions to go through. So this is somewhat unusual, particularly for this board. I think it's important for you to understand and, and what we're gonna talk about today, and what you can and cannot do. We all have a role in this. My role, as I explained earlier, is to represent the administration and the school in this process. Mr. Duggan has a role to represent you as the agency that will make the decision. But you can, and this is all laid out in the statute that I think he gave you, but you can simply adopt the order, the recommended order of the ALJ. That is one action you can take, and that will be the action that I recommend you take today on behalf of not only the administration, but also Sarasota High School. You have the ability to do things with both findings of fact and conclusions of law, so I want to take just a minute to talk to you about that, so you can kind of get that, so that when I talk about it, you'll know what I'm talking about. And in kind of in reverse order, because you find findings of fact first in the order, and then you'll find conclusions of law second, but the statute deals with them reverse. But, the statute basically says that you, as a board or agency, have the ability to reject or modify the ALJ's conclusions of law, over which you have substantive jurisdiction, and interpretation of administrative rules over which you have substantive jurisdiction. Now, that's a mouthful, but for the most part, you're going to have to make a determination that the law that was used in the conclusions of law by the ALJ is wrong. If she says it's, the burden is preponderance of the evidence, and you think it's something else, then you're gonna have to provide some specifics as to why you think it's something other than preponderance of the evidence. It says the agency must state with particularity its reasons for rejecting or modifying such conclusions of law or interpretation of administrative rules, and must make a finding that its substituted conclusion of law or interpretation of administrative rule is as or more reasonable than that which was rejected or modified. So that's the conclusions of law, and that's just where the judge lays out the law for you, and you'll see as we go through these exceptions, that's where she also takes the findings of fact and applies them to the law in order to reach her recommendation. The second thing is the findings of fact. The agency may not reject or modify a finding of fact unless it first determines from a review of the entire record. So what is the record in this case? It is the transcript, the written transcript you were provided of the hearing that took place. It is the exhibits that were both admitted by the district as well as Ms. Deal. That is your record. There is nothing else in the record. You should not consider anything else. The audio tapes that you've been given are not part of the record, they should not have been listened to, they shouldn't be considered. The transcript is, which is what the ALJ based her decision on, is the official record along with the exhibits in this case. But you can reject and modify findings of fact if you first determine after a review of the entire record, and by stating with particularity that these findings of fact were not based upon competent substantial evidence. Lawyers use those three words a lot, particularly administrative lawyers, competent substantial evidence. Evidence which is more likely than not to prove a given proposition, basically is what that is. So if there is evidence in the record of a particular proposition, then, and there is a lack of evidence on the other side, then, then that's, that is a finding of fact which has behind it substantial competent evidence. So the agency, so if you're going to substitute your A finding of fact, you're going to have to show in your order that there are other facts, which if we were to balance them out, are more likely to prove that proposed fact than what the ALJ found. Okay, so you'll have to go into the record, you'll have to point that out, and that'll have to be cited within your final order in the case. The last thing I mentioned was the recommended disposition of the case, which is the penalty section where the ALJ, in this case, recommends termination. That's one in which you can, you cannot reduce or increase it without a complete review of the record, and without stating with particularity your reasons for doing so in the order, and citing to the record for justifying your actions. So there's a lot to be said there, but that's our, that's sort of what your role here is today, when you look at what I'm about to tell you in terms of the facts as they transpired, based upon the RO, as we call it, the recommended order of the judge. I want to say one quick thing about exceptions, okay? You have a lot of them to deal with today, they do have to be dealt with individually. The statute also provides that there are circumstances under which you do not have to consider an exception, and I'm going to point that out to you each time today, I think that happens. So then, agency, and I'm reading and I'm quoting, "An agency need not rule on an exception that does not, one, clearly identify the disputed portion of the recommended order by page and paragraph number; two, that does not identify the legal basis for the exception; and three, that does not include appropriate and specific citations to the record." So you're gonna hear that a lot from me today, I don't mean to seem repetitious, but there are instances where these exceptions do not meet this standard, it's a three-part standard, it has to have all three of them, and if it doesn't, it's not something you have to consider as a board. I want to talk a little bit about the cases that came to me, and what we learned, and what we presented to the ALJ, so that you have that. Ms. Joyce was employed, or Ms. Deal was employed with the district really since August of 1997. She was employed at Sarasota High School the entire time. She was hired as an attendance clerk, that grade level is known as SSP 5, and that has a job description, which was an exhibit in part of the record, which you may or may not have seen. Florida statutes consider these types of employees what are known as educational support employees, as opposed to instructional employees or administrative employees. Responded is also a member of and governed by the Classified Bargaining Unit Collective Bargaining Agreement between SETAA and the Sarasota County School Board, so she is a member of that, she is governed by that. She spent her entire career, as I indicated prior to reassignment at Sarasota High School, either as the attendance clerk or somewhere else, and somewhere else becomes important as we get into that. She has, and I will tell you, this has been the, when I began to look through her files, this is what I saw, she has a lengthy history with the district of unprofessional interaction with colleagues, students, and parents. And that is the theme, that was the theme of my case that we presented to the ALJ. It goes back in her records as far as we could find in 2010, and I'll explain to you why there's a gap in there where there wasn't much going on, I think she just did, but I'll explain it to you as well. She served the longest under Principal Jeff Radek, and he testified at the hearing. As early as 2010, the district, by the way, uses what are known as memorandums of instruction, they are not disciplinary in nature, they are meant, quite frankly, as a tool to help the employee to bring to their attention a deficiency in their performance, and help them to overcome that and become a more productive employee for the district. They're known as MOIs, memorandums of instruction. She received her first one from Mr. Radek's administration in 2010. This came right after she received an evaluation that also enumerated these same deficiencies, which is this issue she has when she interacts with certain people in maintaining a professional relationship. These are parents, students, and can be, quite frankly, also her colleagues. So she had a negative performance evaluation. On the heel of that, she gets an MOI from him in 2010. It references something known as the principles of professional conduct of the education profession in Florida. These are in the administrative rules, they are basically a roadmap for not only instructional employees, but also educational support employees, to understand what's expected of them, not only in their, in their relationship with their colleagues, but also in their relationship with students and parents. And then it specifies basically a series of do's and don'ts, and that is part of the record, it's actually, portions of it are actually quoted within the recommended order. So, she receives this MOI in 2010. She's cautioned at that point about controlling her personal views from that she might find in the district to not distort intentionally or misrepresent facts concerning an educational manner, and to not maliciously or intentionally make false statements about other employees. It was about this time that, so you have to understand, where does the attendance clerk work? They are at the front of the high school, as testified by Mr. Jones, they have the single most interaction with students and parents on a daily basis of anybody in that school, because there are parents and students coming and going and out of that school all day long, not just a part of the regular intake in the morning and the end of school in the afternoon. So, the SSP 5 attendance clerk, they have a lot of interaction with the public and a lot of interaction with students. She is, according to Mr. Radek, moved into Building 14, which was in the back of the school, I guess somewhere, I'm not super familiar with the campus, but in there, she had limited access to parents and students. She was working with assistant principals who were there at that time, I think because there was some renovations going on at the high school, and she also worked on a limited basis with ESA students, but she did not have the volume of contact she had on a day-to-day basis. So in that limited, controlled environment, she did better. But again, she's outside of her being an SSP 5 attendance clerk, she's actually working as an assistant to these people, and it's, I guess, she says, outside her lane, that's the first I've heard of that, but nonetheless, that was not what she was hired to do, she was hired as an attendance clerk, which is to deal with the people coming and going all day throughout. But yet, in Mr. Radek's last year, she got another MOI from him with regard to, again, the same issues, taking precautions to distinguish between personal views and that of the educational institution. Mr. Radek testified that this was in lieu of disciplinary, he considered disciplinary action against her, and under the progressive disciplinary matrix, that would have been a written reprimand, I'm sorry, an oral reprimand, but in this case, he elected to use an MOI instead, so she actually received another MOI there at the district to try to help improve her performance. 2016, Mr. Jones arrives. Mr. Jones testified very clearly that it was his goal to raise the performance of that school, and I think he told me in a very proud way- that school, and I think he told me in a very proud way, and I think he should be, that through his work and the work of others there, they brought that up to an A-level school. But to do that, they needed the cooperation of all 160 employees in that school. Everybody had to bring the game up in order to get the school up to performing, to provide what it needed to do well with the students in terms of their educational experience there, as well as the customer support that's provided to parents. By October, he realizes he's got folks like Ms. Deal that are working someplace where they don't belong. They're not working in the job they were hired to do. So he moves her back to the attendance clerk position. Within literally a few days, issues come up because she again is exposed to a high-volume environment of not only students but also parents. And so, instead of disciplinary, he does an MOI for her, which again is meant to try to help her improve her work performance. Among the things, there were when she was taking her breaks, playing musical devices in the attendance office, the need to keep professional verbal communications with colleagues, parents, and students, refraining from verbalizing complaints to others while working in the working environment, and to collaborate and obtain approval prior to changing any policies, protocols, and procedures, and to do so through the normal channels within the school. And that's consistent with what Mr. Radek dealt with as six years previous to that at the school. So the complaints began to roll in, and I won't go through these in great detail, but we had to prove these in order to show progressive discipline. So the collective bargaining agreement requires that before you can terminate somebody, you have to go through progressive discipline, and that includes oral reprimand, written reprimand, suspension without pay, sometimes with pay, and then termination. So all four of those things have to happen. There's due process at every level. Ms. Deal cites to you a case known as Wine Garden. We now call these Wine Garden hearings. So anytime an investigation is begun of an employee by the principal or someone at the school, they conduct a little mini Wine Garden hearing, and that requires, one, notice to the employee, and, second, the right of representation from the union. And so you'll see in the exhibits at each and every level of the progressive discipline that was followed, she and the union received notice, and she and the union were allowed to participate in that investigation. At each and every level of that, the discipline, the behavior was confirmed, the misconduct was confirmed, and discipline was meted out. It started with oral reprimand, followed with a written reprimand. By the way, those were signed by Ms. Deal. The union didn't, nor Ms. Deal nor the union did they contest those. We're going to talk a little bit about, and a little bit about administrative finality. So today, you can't undo those. Those happened a long time ago. They were not appealed. They are final for purposes of the hearing that we did. Then there's a third incident that occurred that because of the matrix for progressive discipline that necessitated a suspension without pay. It's important to recognize that that was originally recommended as a three-day suspension without pay. It was reduced as an accommodation based on negotiations with the union to two days. Ms. Deal served those two days unpaid back in, I think, October of 2017, somewhere in there, and there was no further challenge to that. So again, based on administrative finality, that one's closed. If you look at the facts of each of these, and the RO goes through this pretty well, and I won't belabor it, they're the same kinds of things. They're inappropriate interactions with students and parents. They are, in some cases, the one incident involving the young lady who had had an unexpected menstrual cycle at school, and she needed a change of clothes, and she went into the attendance clerk to do that and was treated so horribly, I can't even speak of it. But it's in the record. It's there. And that's the kind of thing that the district and the school was dealing with with Ms. Deal, okay? Those types of just off-the-wall behavioral issues concerning how she interacts with some people, not everybody. You're going to find people that love Ms. Deal. There are students who love Ms. Deal, but not everybody, and I think that's the issue is, you know, how many of these poor people and parents had to come through there to get some level of abuse before the administration has to step in and do something about it. The last incident was what should have been a great day for Jonisha Burks. She had just received word that she had passed, she's a senior, she had just received word she'd passed the SAT and was going to graduate with her class. Ms. Gartland had called her to the office to give her that news, so this was a great day for Jonisha, and unfortunately, it ended with, in a shouting match with Ms. Deal about the fact that she doesn't have a hall pass or that she shouldn't be there in general or that Ms. Deal is not Ms. Gartland's secretary or what other snotied comment, which is what set that whole thing off, and resulted in what Denise Massey, who was the security aide and a retired New York police officer, said was an uncontrolled shouting match in which, put aside what the student was doing, they were just as wrong, but there was an adult in the room, and that was Ms. Deal, and she's shouting and screaming, according to the testimony of Ms. Massey, at this young lady because she's simply there to get what was supposed to be some great news. So those are the incidents that form the basis of this today. I will go through them in greater detail through the exceptions. I don't want to belabor all of that. There will be issues that I do want to address surrounding the video, and I think it's important for me to address those. So there was one operational camera in that workspace. That is a video-only camera, no audio. At the time of the Wine Garden hearing for Ms. Burks, which was the incident that precipitated the recommendation for termination, that video was reviewed by administration at Sarasota High School, including Mr. Jones and Mr. Chase. It was also reviewed by Roy Dubin for the union as well as Ms. Deal. Now, because this was a verbal altercation and not a physical altercation, the sound was critically important to know who said what, what was the tone of their voice, the demeanor of their voice, and the volume of their voice, particularly as it relates to Ms. Deal, because she is the one accused of misconduct. Unfortunately, without audio, the video was for the most part useless, and I think everyone, David Jones testified, that was the consensus of everyone in the group that watched it that day. So the district follows the state retention policy for public records. If you've ever read it, it's about 100 pages long, but if you go in there, there's a section on surveillance videos, and the retention policy surveillance videos is 30 days. So the union nor Ms. Deal requested that the video be retained after watching it that day. And again, according to the testimony of Mr. Jones, because it was not dispositive of the issue of what did Ms. Deal say on that occasion as it related to that student. And so within 30 days or so, 31 days, however it long, that video is overwritten by other videos, so it is not retained. It wasn't until this case came about, meaning she had requested an appeal of the recommendation for termination, that there were requests made all over this school system to the board itself, to IT, my office for a copy of this video, and unfortunately, it's gone, and that's just the way it is. But again, we have cases, we have one right now where there was a physical altercation between the employee and a student, and so the video is critical. Well, it was saved. We have it so we could actually see what happened. But again, it was a physical, not, because none of these videos unfortunately have sound, so if there's a verbal altercation, they're not helpful to us to determine, did Ms. Deal raise her voice? Was she rude or disrespectful to the employee or to the student? Or is this all Jonisha Burks' fault? I would say that we had Ms. Burks subpoenaed four separate times to come to this hearing. I think if we'd have had this hearing the first once or twice, I think she would have showed up, but by the fourth time of tracking her down, she moved a lot. She just wasn't willing to come. She did provide a statement to the district back during the Wine Garden investigation, and it just basically, you have it, it just says very simply that, you know, what I've transpired to you or related to you to what transpired today. So at the hearing, we as the district put our case together. We have a whole list of witnesses and exhibits we may use or we might not use. It's not a shell game. All of it depends on what she does during her defense. So we had listed quite a number of witnesses and some exhibits. We put our case on. I told Mr. Jones I was satisfied. I thought we had met the burden in the case, and let's wait and see what she has to say because we have the opportunity for what's called rebuttal. So we can call witnesses and put on exhibits in rebuttal to the defenses and the issues she raises during her turn. To everybody's surprise, the morning she was set to start, which was Wednesday morning, we had a five-day hearing scheduled. We only took two days to put our case on. The morning of the third day, when it's her turn to go, she says, "I'm not testifying, and I'm not putting on any other witnesses." Her daughter testified briefly. She had a gentleman testify that to this day I don't have any idea what he said that was relevant to any of this, and that was it. She was done. So her due process, her opportunity to be heard was on that day, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday of that week, when she elected, based on the fact that she said she's going up to a higher court at some point, she elected not to do any of that. I hope you've all read the RO because I've read it a lot, and I read it again last night, and one of the things that jumps out at me now as I read it so long ago after it actually occurred is the judge was desperate to hear from her. She really wanted to know her side of the story, and Ms. Deal elected not to do it. And I don't think today she should be rewarded for that. That was her chance. That's what she asked for. You know, the difficult part for her was she was a member of the union but not represented by the union at this. I don't know the facts or circumstances behind that, but they did not represent her in these proceedings. So she was on her own, but that does not relieve her of the obligations to follow the same rules that we have to follow when we present a case to a judge, and I thought Judge Desai did a very good job of trying to help her through this process. You see judges do this with what we call pro se litigants. Pro se, meaning they represent themselves, and I thought Judge Desai did a very good job. It doesn't mean that everything is relevant. If you want to come in there and talk about David Jones being a bad guy in terms of how he disciplined another employee five years ago, that's not relevant to whether you're guilty of misconduct, not at all. So there were some limitations placed upon her in terms of the types of evidence and the witnesses that she would be allowed to present, but nothing was limited in terms of the issues which were the misconduct. Did she do it? Did she not? Were there mitigating factors that might have been relevant that we would want to hear about? But again, she elected not to testify. I will tell you that looking at the exceptions, I would say that more is not more. There are a lot of exceptions here, but it's sometimes going to be hard for us to figure out what exactly she's asking for. Some of them cite to criminal statutes that she was told, not only did the ALJ not have jurisdiction over, but also this board doesn't have jurisdiction over. I will tell you that for the record, there was no evidence of evidence tampering that I saw from anywhere, but if she truly believes that, there's a place to go to deal with that, and it's the state attorney's office. And to my knowledge, she's not done that. So with that, we'll be prepared to address each exception and also answer any questions the board may have as we go through this process. Thank you.
We will be going through each item, and they've been marked for you. We will cite the place in the recommended order. If we could try to keep the remarks to that item, it would be helpful, but to clarify, Mr. Robinson represented the district and the superintendent. We were not, we were told not to contact him before this meeting because he represents them, and we're supposed to listen to everything, not just what he has to say. So we received what he said, we received what you said, we received transcripts and the exhibits. Our attorney can represent us on issue, Mr. Duggan can represent us only on procedure. He advised us that he could not tell us or advise us how to vote, just the procedure that we needed to follow. That might be what you're referring to in there, and there's a difference between that in that Mr. Duggan works for the board, but the board must stand as, sort of like a judge of this appeal, and we cannot ask him how to vote, just the procedure. I do have two requests to speak before we start. Is that accurate, Ms. Rose?
No.
Somebody must have pushed your buttons while you were gone, and you didn't either, right?
Yeah.
So the first item. It is number one, but it is not listed in here for some reason, so I will go to my cheat sheet.
It's right there on the screen.
And the recommended order, there was filed on paragraph two, page two, paragraph one, December 14, 2018, basically that you were recommended for termination, and Ms. Deal filed an exception to that, and the district responded. Do we want to hear their testimony at this time? Ms. Deal, do you have something to add to that?
No, ma'am. Really, that's, no, ma'am, I have nothing to add to that. It was just the reason for this, for this exception was the date was incorrect in the judge's recommended order. She had said the 14th, it was actually the 3rd. I just wanted to correct that. His first, Todd Bowden's first letter to me was on December 3, not the 14th. I just wanted to clear that up in the record. He did send me a letter on the 3rd and not the 14th.
Mr. Robinson?
The only thing I'm going to say about the first 13 agenda items you have is they are not in a finding of fact, they're not in a conclusion of law, and they're not in the recommendation. I talked about the prelude you might see in a book. That's what these, that's what this first part, the first four pages, give or take, I think the findings of fact start at the bottom of the fourth page of the RO. They do not form the basis of a legal exception. So it is my request or recommendation based on the school administration that this one along with the next 12 be denied on the basis that they are outside of the statutory provisions for how the agency deals with the order. Again, these are just like the little roadmap, things you might read at the beginning of a book about what the author did, how they got there, but they aren't the story. The stories and the findings of fact, conclusions of law, and the recommended. So I would say this one and the next 13 would be denied, and that would be my statement for each.
Is there any public comment on Agenda Item 1? Is there any board comment on Agenda Item 1?
Yes.
Ms. Goodwin?
Well, can we make one motion to, for something that applies to all 13 at one time?
Florida Statute 120.57 requires for the board to address each exception individually, so I would ask that we go through each one. I think that's the proper way to do it.
Okay. Thank you.
The board would entertain a motion.
I move that the board reject the exception which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order. Did I do that correctly?
That would be a proper motion under Robert's rules, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we can vote, and now a yes vote would be to reject.
All in favor of the motion? Are we voting? Oh, we're voting electronically.
Could you tell me what that vote says up there? We can't read that screen. It looks like it's all 5-1, 5-0.
5-0.
We move to Agenda Item 2 in reference to recommended order, page 2, paragraph 3. Regarding May 28, 19, submitted a letter requesting a hearing, and I think there's something about the dates. And I would imagine Mr. Robinson's comments from before reign true on this. That is not a statement of fact or conclusion of law.
That is true, but I would also like to point out that that date, we started on August 26, was I would also like to point out that that date, we started on August 26, was agreed to by Ms. Deal. She actually filed a document that I actually have in my hand called a response to initial order. And in it, she says that she's available for a final hearing in the case on any dates in July and August. The district had proposed August 26 because it was available for myself, Mr. Jones, and our witnesses. So, I don't know why now there's an objection to something.
I think it also had something to do with summer break.
It may have. I don't know.
Any comment from the board, from the public? I would entertain a motion.
I just would ask, I want to make sure Ms. Deal has an opportunity to weigh in if she chooses to on this.
I expressly put this in here with the Florida statute of 1012.33, which states that 60 days, they opened this window, not me. They said that they had it timely. They did it. It's supposed to be held within 60 days. It was not. I expressly put this in here for appeal purposes. Thank you.
Were you notified of the date and agreed to the date back in, was it July?
I don't think I really even knew that this law existed. But as they opened the door for this, I looked up the law, and it was not held, it was not done within the 60-day period that they're required to do. And then, of course, they said that they can't do anything because that's the administrative hearing law. The judge, it's her. You're out of jurisdiction here, which is fine. But I put this in here, I put everything in here. So, expressly for the next level. Expressly. Okay. So, if you want to reject this, fine.
I entertain a motion from the board?
I move that the board reject the exception, which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order.
Second.
Please vote on Item 2. A yes vote will be to accept the rejection. That also passes 5-0. Item 3 is in reference to Recommended Order, Page 2, Paragraph 3. I think this also has to do with a timing, date timing, but according to Mr. Robinson is not up to being heard. Do you have anything to add, Ms. Deal?
Y'all can go right through these if you want. It's fine. You just go right ahead. I'm not going to stop you from rejecting all 12 of them if you want. I'm not going to stop you. Okay? That's your responsibility. That's your responsibility. I mean, if you want to reject all those, that's, the only thing I can say on these is there was a Weingarten meeting minutes. This one is saying that, once again, that the film footage was, and I mean, you know, the film footage. Let me clear this up because Mr. Robinson, I think, I don't know which path he went down on the film. But the film was not, it shouldn't have been destroyed or anything else. It wasn't on the board's cameras, which do only last for 30 days, and I am aware of that. This is from the school feed at Sarasota High School, and it was sent via email. So, you know, I just want that information clear to you that it was not from the school board cameras, which I do know that are only a 30-day hold period, even though that film was requested from the union.
And I'm sorry. And I believe you addressed that later also in one of your exceptions.
I addressed the film throughout. That's my, you know, I'm consistent with the film being destroyed and tampering with my emails and enabling my email for three months. You know, this is all where I'm, you know, even though this is against misconduct in the office, which, you know, I'm saying didn't happen either because I was attacked by the child, which is not their position, but it is mine, and it has been consistent. And the film has been consistent since day one of this hearing. It's been consistent. That's my pinnacle, and I've got it in the complaint to the Judge Cohen. It's in there that was filed way back when this first began. And the complaint is part of the R.O., even though she didn't, she mentions it. So, she opened that door. I just want you to know, everything that I contested against or put in here is something that they've opened the door to, not me. And that's everything. I didn't, I don't even know how to open the door to these. So, they opened these doors, and I go, oh, well, then I guess I can explain on that because they said this. So, that's my understanding.
Thank you. Again, this is to the Recommended Order, Page 2, Paragraph 3. No further input. Is there a motion?
I move the board reject the exception, which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded to reject. A yes vote is to reject. Please vote. And that motion passes 3 to 0. Item number four is in reference to the Recommended Order, Page 2, Footnote 3. It contained an allegation acted inappropriately in front of parents on November 7, 2018. And I guess the basis for this termination was abandoned in the school board proposed recommended order. Ms. Deal, do you have anything to add?
Well, if you look at the paragraph 72 that she references, that was in Mr. Robinson's recommended order, it has nothing to do with what this is, what you just said, any of it. That has something to do with Ms. Byrd's testimony, that they had thrown it out. And it's number, paragraph 72, and Mr. Robinson's recommended order, his proposed recommended, let me see if I can pull it up real quick. Where's number 72? In his recommended order, it says, "The petitioner satisfied its burden of proof uponance of the evidence. Respondent was guilty of misconduct in the office. The only evidence offered by respondent as to the November 2nd incident was her daughter's testimony." That's, see, that's where I was confused at. It was that whole verbiage, it spoke to two different issues. So, and that is referencing Mr. Robinson's paragraph 72 on page 23 of his recommended order. And it says, "Her testimony was also contrary to the testimony of Denise Massey, an impartial law enforcement witness." So, I just, that's why I was confused as to even what to put there. So, I just wanted to state that.
I believe this references a Weingarten meeting on November 19. A used date you are not aware of, but I believe it was signed.
Of November 19? Yes.
And Mr. Robinson said this is outside of our purview again?
It is. I mean, I've never seen an exception to a footnote. The footnote is just simply say there was an additional ground that the district did not pursue at the hearing, is all it's saying. I mean, we had a second ground for termination that we did not pursue.
Any comment from the board? Any comment from the general public? At this time, I would entertain a motion?
I move the board reject the exception, which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order.
Second.
Please vote. A yes vote is to reject. And this passes 5-0. We are now on Item 5. Item 5 is the exception on Page 2, Footnote 3. Believe that is something similar, an issue on November 7. But again, was abandoned by this proposed recommendation. It was in a footnote. Ms. Deal, do you have any comment on this or something you'd like to bring forward?
I've already really commented on that. Thank you.
Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? I will entertain a motion?
I make a motion that the board reject the exception, which will result in upholding the specific recommendation of the recommended order.
Second.
Please vote. A yes vote is to reject. Item 5 passes 5-0. We're on Item 6. I went too far. In regards to Recommended Order, Page 3, Paragraph 1, document titled, "Respondent's Claimant to the Honorable Judge About a Complaint" that was filed, and Ms. Deal said it wasn't entitled for a motion. Ms. Deal, would you like to explain why you filed this exemption?
Like I said, Judge Desai opened that window in her recommended order regarding the complaint. So, I just wanted to touch on that to let everyone know that that was from day one. Like I said, regarding the document, the last chance agreement, that was in two different formats, where the one had the handwriting and had my name all through it with the alcohol reference. And the one that the actual union sent to me, that's what this is referencing. This is the documentation difference, where it appears to me allegedly that it was tampered with, and there's handwriting on there. There's, you know, that's probably going to be one of my adversary pieces of information for the next level because it'll be supportive document of what the actual document looks like as compared to that one. I just, that's all what I want to say.
The district response. Again, it says it's not an exception to either finding a fact or conclusion of law. We are not required to rule, but I will entertain a motion.
I move the board may reject the exception, which will result in upholding the specific provision of the recommended order. Second.
All right. Please vote. That passes 5-0. Agenda Item 7, in reference to Recommended Order, Page 3, Paragraph 1. On August 29, Ms. Deal filed a document, responded to complaint to Judge Harry S. Cohen. Ms. Deal?
In the complaint, I did state that there was an ex parte communication that I alleged against Rob Robinson and Judge Desai during the hearing. And I did have that on recording. And the reason I recorded this, and he's saying that the recording was inappropriate, I asked that I could actually digitally record this, and Judge Desai did give me the permission to do so. And I had such an adverse from the other, I gave a deposition. The reason I didn't testify is I gave depositions or tried to, two times, with Mr. Robinson, and neither one of them turned out very well. So, that's, and there was a discrepancy when I went to a read and wave, is what they call it when you go to a deposition. Once it's finalized and put into a format, you can go to a read and wave. I'm not sure if you're familiar with that. But while you're doing that, you're reading everything from your knowledge to see if you think something was said differently or whatever. So, at the read and wave, there was verbiage missing from one of the depositions that Mr. Robinson and I had discussed, and I know it was missing. I put an exception sheet to that. One of the exception sheets from the transcript is like a copy and paste. It's all sideways, and the other one's very uniform and down the thing. So, I'm not sure what happened with that. That's the reason I took it upon myself to record it so I would make sure that the exact verbiage of that hearing and today's proceedings, also on recording, are correct in my mind. So, when I have to make some kind of statement later on, maybe I'll be able to refer to that recording. Even though you said you can't use the recording in these proceedings, it's fine. I just want you to know that it is there and available because my daughter's testimony is on that recording. And there's somewhere in here, it'll be later on, that they state that she didn't like Janice Burks, and that's a total lie. So, I mean, I can prove that in the recording. So, and whether it's not in the transcript because they exted, they didn't want anybody to know, you know, that her statement that she handwrote was missing. So, that's all I needed to say.
Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, I want to address, an ex parte communication with a judicial officer is where one party or their representative has a singular conversation with the judge outside the presence of either the other party or the other lawyer. I will tell you, I never had any ex parte communications with Judge Desai. However, Ms. Deal did. She had two of them. And Judge Desai, as she's required to do, actually filed notices of ex parte communication in the record based on the two separate communications that she had with Ms. Deal, in which I was not a party. I'm also going to point out to you that the exceptions, all the ones you have today, were never served on me. They were never sent to me. I had to get them from Mr. Duggan. Otherwise, I'd be in the dark as to what we were talking about today. But other than that, you don't have to consider this because it's not in a finding of fact or conclusion of law.
Thank you. Any comments from the board? Any comments from the public? I would entertain a motion.
I move that the board reject the exception, which will result in upholding the specific provision of the recommended order.
Second.
Please vote. Again, a yes vote is to reject. And that passes 5-0. Agenda Item 7. Oh, did we just do 7? Can't keep my glasses on. Agenda Item 8, I'm sorry, is paragraph, Page 3, Paragraph 3. Board filed a motion to strike respondent's second amended pre-hearing statement or to exclude untimely disclosed documents for fees and costs. It's treated as a motion in liming, I mean, I'm not sure how to pronounce that, and at the pre-hearing conference held on October 20. Ms. Deal has raised an exception to that. Ms. Deal?
Yes, the spoliation of evidence, missing emails, destroyed documents, missing film footage. Once again, all of those are the reason I'm here today. All of those. If they, if things would have not turned out that way, we probably wouldn't be here. But unfortunately, that's the way it turned out. And I just wanted to, once again, when you're relying on Rob Robinson, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of this Part 6 of this conflict, 28-106.601 conflict, because he's sitting here, and he's actually, he's advising you, and it says he's not supposed to. So, I just want to keep adding that into the minutes. Okay?
Okay. And this was to...
Reject number 18, or number 8?
Reject in volume 8. And I think this was some information that the judge had not, had ruled is not appropriate for the final hearing, and he denied her request.
Oh, and I, yes, I did ask for a mistrial under the Code 90.104.1. I asked for a mistrial on the third day of testimony due to the fact that the evidence had been destroyed. And this is a statute that says if adversity, if it affects me adversely... if adversity, if it affects me adversely that I could, you know, move for a trial, for a mistrial, which I did. And I, you know, I just want to make sure that...
If we could try to keep our comments to the item that we're talking about.
And that item number 8 we're talking about? It's down here, exception 7. It says down here, recording under the Florida Evidence, let me see. This supports Ms. Deal's motion for mistrial under the Florida Evidence Code, right there at the second, I don't know, under number 8, 1, 2, the second paragraph, the third sentence. I just wanted to make sure that you, that I get that in there, that I did ask for a mistrial at this point in the, in the hearing.
Yes, we, we know that. Thank you. And the judge denied it, and you're appealing the denial.
Yeah, the judge did. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson.
Nothing further on that.
Again, it doesn't have the finding a fact or conclusion of law. I would entertain a motion.
I move the board reject the exception which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order.
Second.
Please vote. Again, a vote for is to reject. And this motion passes 5-0. Item 9 refers to the recommended order, page 3, paragraph 3. School board filed a motion to strike your second amended pre-hired statement or in the alternative include untimely disclosed witnesses. The undersigned, the judge ruled that these issues were not appropriate for the final hearing. Ms. Deal.
Yes, she, yes, she did say that. She said that destroyed evidence, missing film footage, harassment, all relevant to my case was not important to these proceedings. I don't know how that's not important, but maybe not to her, but it was to me. I just want that notated. And I just think that that caused prejudice against me once again, and it was a very one-sided situation the whole entire time, so. But that's okay.
Mr. Robin, can you explain what that motion was treated as a motion in limine?
Motion in limine, yes, ma'am. That's a, that's a reference to a motion that is typically filed before trial in an effort to either limit the issues, witnesses, or evidence. They are very common. I don't think I've ever had a case in 32 years where somebody didn't have a motion in limine because frankly, particularly when you're dealing with a pro se litigant, they're going to think certain things are relevant that might not be. And so she had listed people who were former disgruntled employees at Sarasota High School that don't like David Jones. Well, that has nothing to do with whether or not she's guilty of misconduct in office. So the judge rightfully excluded those. So that's just a common motion that's filed prior to trial to limit issues, witnesses, and exhibits.
And it also says it was untimely disclosed. All right.
Can I speak to that, please? The untimely part of this, in the first hearing that we had scheduled on August 26th, the day that my mother passed, Mr. Robinson, 10 days prior to that, had put in a second amended stipulation and his was accepted. However, I put one in 14 days prior to the final hearing and mine gets rejected, once again showing the prejudice of the court. It was not done to me properly. And plus, not only that, Mr. Robinson, after that, after she denied my second amended stipulation, he went ahead and he filed, let me see, what was it? He filed a notice, he filed the transcript proceedings, he filed a designation of transcripts after, after, mind you, I was already rejected for the, for my filing. And this was still before the final hearing. However, he got to go ahead and file what he wanted to file with no problem and she didn't deny him. But yep, four days earlier, I was denied. So once again, showing prejudice, but we're going to reject it. I understand the rejection. I just want to get all this on the record, so I'll have some foothold for later on. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson.
I don't have anything to add. I mean, the reason the ALJ is there is to conduct the administration of the case through the issuance of the recommended order. She is going to make rulings, some of them you're going to like, some of them I'm not going to like, and that's just the nature of litigation. You know, she ruled in Ms. Deal's favor on occasion, she ruled against Ms. Deal on occasion. It doesn't mean anybody got unfair treatment. I, I thought the ALJ, to use an old country phrase, bent over backwards to make sure Ms. Deal had everything she needed when the opportunity came about to present her case, and then she just didn't do it.
Thank you. Any comment from the board? Any comment from the public? I will entertain a motion.
I move the board reject the exception that will result in upholding the specific provision of the recommended order.
Second.
Please vote. And that passes, motion passes 5-0. Agenda item 10 is the recommended order, page 3, paragraph 3, October 23rd, 2020. The board filed a motion to strike pre-hiring statement. And judge ruled that they were not appropriate for the final hearing. Ms. Deal.
I thought we just entered that on the last page. Apparently, we didn't. My, my, they weren't untimely. The law does give you 10 days, and this was 14 days prior, so I was not untimely. So that's, that's, I'm alleging that's not true. And the fees and costs, you know, were never even mentioned to me at all, and this was the second time that Mr. Robinson had filed for fees and costs. The first time during a conference call between Mr. Robinson, myself, and Judge Desai. Speaking of the fees and the cost, I mentioned one thing about the law and I got hung up on from all parties. So they didn't even come to the fees and costs and that, I was like, well, we just kind of stopped that in mid-process because I mentioned, and I did want to say that even though she, Judge Desai is an ALJ, the Supreme Court, although hearing officers are entitled to substantial deference, they are judicial generalists who are trained in the law but not necessarily in specific profession. So, you know, she's general law people. So some of this stuff I don't think was in her wheelhouse, and I did mention that to her on several occasions. That was one of the reasons for my motion to, of the mistrial because she was not in her jurisdiction. So I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
I believe this had to do with the spoilage of information and the missing tape. I'm not sure what you were, if you were talking about the same one, but I think you've heard from you before.
Aren't we, are we not on agenda item 10?
Agenda item 10, page 3, paragraph 3.
Right.
Ultimately, the undersigned struck a number of untimely disclosed witnesses who responded intended to present on her claims a spoilage of evidence, missing emails, video, footage, unless we misunderstood what it was for.
Oh, okay.
But it, but your, your exception reads the spoilage of evidence.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. It does.
Mr. Robinson, again, this is same comment, not an exception to either finding a fact or conclusion of law.
That is correct, ma'am.
And the judge didn't rely on any testimony concerning the video in the case.
That is correct.
Any public comment? Any board comment? I would entertain a motion on item 10.
I move the board reject the exception which will result in upholding the specific provision of the recommended order.
Second.
Please vote. Agenda item 11 refers to the recommended order, page 3, paragraph 3. On October 23rd, 2020, the school board filed a motion to strike. The motion was treated again as in limine. Undersigned struck a number of untimely disclosed witnesses and had to do with the video and alleged harassment of other employees. The underside ruled these issues were not appropriate for the final hearing. And Ms. Deal, you filed an exception to that.
Yeah, I did find an addendum to this. It wasn't in my original exceptions, which it was timely because Friday, the day I did file this one was the last day of the 15 days. If you'll do the count, that is, this is timely. And they say it's not, but it was. And it states that I was not made aware of the motion in advance, which is part of the law in its rule 28-106.204 in the administrative rules that any motion other than a motion to dismiss contain a statement that the movement has conferred with the other parties of record and state whether the parties object to the motion. I was never conferred with on that motion, and so I feel like that motion were, he, were my further stipula, my proposed recommended, um, my recommend, oh goodness, I'm losing my verbiage here. My second amended pre-trial statement should have been accepted instead of rejected by the law judge. Like I said before, Mr. Robinson got to file things after I did, and they were never rejected. However, I filed 14 days in advance and mine aren't rejected, so I just want that made for the record. Thank you.
Agenda item 11, again, is...
If I may for just a moment, for the record, this addendum was filed, I believe it was timely filed by Ms. Deal, but I just would like the record to reflect that in fairness to Ms. Deal, I reached out to her this week to make sure I had all of the agenda items. She confirmed that we did have all of them and that this was one of them. This one had been received after the fact by mail, sent to me. So I just wanted to explain, this was a late addition to the agenda even though it was timely filed and it was only confirmed to exist after Mr. Robinson had filed his exceptions, which is, I think, I don't want to speak for him, why there's no response there from Mr. Robinson. He might be able to expand on that more.
Mr. Robinson.
That's correct. I was driving through Atlanta last Thursday when this was sent to me in an email, and I, I thought, why am I getting exceptions at this point? And I do thank you for sending that to me. It was not served on us, otherwise we would have responded to it. But again, she's asking you to step into the shoes of the ALJ in terms of the administration of the case, which just isn't appropriate, and this is not a finding a fact or conclusion of law.
Any comments from the public? Any comments from the board? I will entertain a motion.
I move the board reject the exception which will result in upholding of this specific provision of the recommended order.
Second.
Please vote. I'm not continuing to say that a vote for is, is to reject because it's complicated when you vote yes to reject. I found that it was complicated, but I think we got the hang of it. I'm not going to be repeating that every time. The motion to reject passes 5-0. Agenda item 12, the recommended order, page 3, footnote 4. And that had to be length of time between the commencement and the resumption, the hearing, testimony at August 26th was not considered, the parties agreed to start the hearing over and began with their opening arguments November 2nd. Ms. Deal filed an exception to that. Ms. Deal.
Yeah, the same thing applies to this, the last one. It's just, Mr. Robinson got to file his, a day before the hearing, and 14 days earlier, I was rejected. So I just want to stay on that, and I did.
Mr. Robinson.
The only thing this footnote is trying to point out is that the district had begun its case on August 26th. We were two hours into Mr. Jones's testimony when Ms. Deal's had the family emergency. We stopped. The judge asked us when we did reconvene a year and a half later to start over as opposed to trying to pick up two hours into Mr. Jones's testimony. So we agreed to do that. We actually literally started the case all over again, and what happened August 26th of 2019 never happened as far as the judge was concerned. That's all this footnote does.
Again, this is another one of those items that is not either a finding a fact or a conclusion of law, so we are not required to rule on it, but at this time, I will entertain a motion.
I move the board reject the exception with, which will result in upholding the specific provision of the recommended order. Second.
Please vote. The motion to reject passes 5 to 0. We go to the next item. Are we on 12 or 13?
13.
13. My, my, my mouse went and did a zoom. Agenda item 13 is the recommended order, page 4, paragraph 1. The final hearing was held via Zoom, November 2nd. They presented testimony, David Jones, Jeff Reddick. Respondent exhibits R2, R4 were admitted into evidence. I'm just reading the first and the last part of what we're talking about. The deal wrote an exception. And Ms. Deal, would you like to?
Well, none of the people that they, no one except for Denise Massey, who was in there a very short period of time. I mean, her statement does not match the time that she was actually there. She scooped up Janice Burks and took her out to the breezeway and didn't, you know, if you look at her statement, she was there, she heard us, it was, it was just so much time involved, which is not true. Ms. Mary Belvin, none of these people were there. They didn't witness anything. Everything that they wrote in their witness statements, which some were signed, like I said, some weren't signed, signed by the same person with two different signatures. There's so much wrong with these witness statements. But I did, as I was told to do, contact Becky Moyer immediately regarding this. They didn't even call Mary Belvin, who was an eyewitness to the entire situation. She was there the entire time and is the one who told me to call security. Why would you not call your best eyewitness? It's just a little suspect that you wouldn't call the one person who's on your witness list who actually saw the chain of events happen and not have them come and testify. But yet, you're going to, you're going to base everything on hearsay of these administrators. We're just going to trust the administrators because they're administrators, you know, they're people as well as we are. People make mistakes, people are not honest, people are people. So with that said, and Ms., and axing my, Ms. Byrd, my daughter, axing her whole entire testimony, that was just ludicrous. And Mark Gilliland, he says this man, Mr. Robinson, oh, this man testified, I don't even know what about. Well, if you, if you would listen to my recording, you would see that he did do a handwritten, or he emailed a statement. I have the statement was emailed to David Jones. I have the statement, was emailed to David Jones, emailed to David Jones. And that statement was not in my file, it was missing. Keatron Strader also emailed David Jones, missing in my site file. Those, they're missing at the human resources file. They were only found at the union location in that file. That file had everything in it. How, you know, how can that be different? The files are all supposed to be kept in accordance to the law, and they weren't. So with that said, none of these people witnessed anything, it's all hearsay. And Mr. Chase, none of them ever asked me how I was after being attacked by a student. All they wanted was somebody else to make another statement so they could do the, to do the whole thing of progressive discipline, ooh, let's meet all the criteria for that. We're trying real hard to meet the criteria for that, so we need more stuff. That's the way I felt. It was a hostile work environment. None of these people has spent five minutes with me observing what I did on a daily basis. Not Mr. Jones, not Mr. Chase, not Becky Moyer, and Jeff Reddick. I rarely saw him in the 10 years I worked for him. So, you know, this is all hearsay, and I just want to point that out.
Mr. Robinson?
The only thing the ALJ is doing is listing who testified and the exhibit numbers. That's it.
Pardon me?
That's all she's doing. All the ALJ did in that paragraph is list the people who testified and the exhibit numbers.
Exactly. And I'm just saying that those folks who did testify were not eyewitnesses to the fact. That's the fact. The incident was the fact. None of them I witnessed that. The film destroyed, so they can't even depend on that for their defense. They have no defense. That's my position. And we can just keep going, I'm sorry.
Mr. Duggan, it is not our position here to retry the facts of the case or rehear it. We're supposed to be vote on what the judge has ordered is what, and what was presented is what we're supposed to be looking at?
Statute provides that you can either accept the exception, modify, or, excuse me. The statute permits you to either reject the exception, which would be upholding the language as is in the recommended order, the specific provision under each agenda item. You also have the ability to reject it, or reject the recommended order by accepting the exception. Or you have the ability to modify the recommended order by accepting the exception. So you either reject it or accept it, and if you accept it, you can either reject it outright or modify the language. So what we're talking about is changing the language to this, or rejecting it outright, or accepting it. Does that clarify your question?
Well, I was reading on what responsibilities were, and we were, I thought I read that we are not supposed to retry the case, but we are supposed to be voted on the statements of facts that are, that are in the record. We are supposed to be looking at the record as it was presented. We're not supposed to be bringing in new information or rehearing the information that was presented. We are supposed to be voting on the findings of fact, and if we find that the findings of fact did not match the information presented, and that matches an exception, then we could talk about it. Or if we feel that the judge did not rule on the law as it is written, or she had incorrect ruling on the law, so that we can, was the finding of fact that was presented in the recommended order accurate or not? And was the, was the ruling that she made based on the law or not? That's what we're supposed to be looking at. It's not our position to retry the case at this point.
Yes, that is correct. So the administrative law judge listened to three days of testimony, ruled on all of the, you know, witnesses and all of the objections, and reduced what the determination was to writing in the recommended order. And pursuant to statute, Ms. Deal has the ability to file an exception to each specific provision within the recommended order. So she has done that. So your obligation is to review the entire record as a whole, which has been distributed to each of you, and determine whether or not there is any validity to the exception. If you determine that there is not any validity to the exception, which would mean that you believe that the recommended order is that particular provision here, and again, we're talking on this one at paragraph, page 4, paragraph 1. If you think that that is, you know, what occurred, then you would reject the exception. You also have the ability to accept the exception based on your review of the record as a whole. And after your review of the record as a whole, if you decide that the exception that Ms. Deal has filed has some validity to it, you can either reject that particular provision outright, or you have the ability to modify it to something else that is in conformance with your review of the record as a whole.
Thank you.
To answer your question, though, we're not here to bring things that are not within the recommended order, and, you know, you're considering the record as a whole, which, you know, is statutorily defined in the statute.
And the district's written response on this by Mr. Robinson was that it was neither of a finding of fact or a conclusion of law, and it restates the witnesses who appeared at the hearing. Any comments from the public? I have no cards on any of these, so I'm assuming there is none. Comments from the board? I see none. I'll accept a motion.
I move that the board may reject this exception with, which will result in upholding the specific provision of the recommended order.
Second. Motion to reject item 13, the conclusion of item 13 passes 5 to 0. Item 14, recommended order, page 5, number 2. Respondent has been an employee at the school board for 22 years, has worked as an administrative secretary, but relevant to these proceedings, Ms. Deal was employed at Sarasota High as an SSP 5 attendance clerk. Ms. Deal, you object to that finding?
Well, what I wrote in my exception, relevant to these proceedings, I worked above my pay grade for over 10 years. I did ask a CTA to, to explore some back pay for the, for that service, and was rejected by them, and I think that's not right. And then this was the one where he moved me back to my salary lane, and Jane, who was the same salary lane, took over. And then the article nine of the classified bargaining unit agreement, when an employee transfer from one lane to another, she or he will be moved laterally, specifically here, she will be, receive an increase in pay to the percentage increase from the former lane placement to the new lane placement. So that was my exception for this, because I did not, and I did not start it, none of these people were at Sarasota High when I hired on, and I was not hired as an attendance clerk, as they all claim, but they don't know that because they were, none of them there. Once again, this is just hearsay, I don't know where they even got that information. I was originally hired as a bookkeeper's assistant, and I worked in that position until I went on maternity leave. So I just wanted to clear that up. I was not hired as an attendance clerk originally, as is claimed by these folks. And working the 10 years out of my salary lane, I just wanted to be compensated for that, as anyone would. But like I said, STC rejected that.
We aren't here to hear about your salary, we're here about the complaint about your firing.
Well, it just says that respondent, well, this was from the order.
You were hired and you worked for Sarasota High for 22 years, you were an administrative secretary, but relevant to this proceedings, you were employed at Sarasota High as an SSP 5 when this incident's happened, and what we're discussing today.
I was working as an SSP 5 when the proceedings happened, but before these proceedings, I wasn't. That's all right. I mean, we're, I know you are probably tired, so let's, we can move along, I just want to, I want things on the record for myself. If I don't put them on there now, I lose my opportunity. I do not want to lose that opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, the issue is not how Ms. Deal would have written it, but how did Judge Desai write it? And we have begun the section of the findings of fact. This particular one, what's missing is per referencing a section of the record that indicates that what Desai wrote here is either incorrect or untrue. And there's nothing in there that she cited to you in the transcript of the exhibits, which would indicate that she was not an employee for 22 years, that she did not work at Sec. Sarasota High School, and that she was not an SSP 5 attendance clerk. So that's the, so unless she can point you to something in the transcript that says something different, then that particular finding of fact is supported by, and I'll use these magic three words over and over again, substantial competent evidence. It's in the record, it's there, and there's nothing to refute that.
I see no comments from the public. Any comments from the board? I see none. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the board may reject this exception if it believes that the competent substantial evidence supports the specific finding of fact, that the proceedings upon which the finding were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
Second. Agenda item 15, the vote to reject the exception on page 5, item 2, has been rejected. Item 15.
To clarify, that was a 5-0 vote?
5-0 vote, yes. Agenda item 15, recommended order, page 5, number 4. These are findings of facts. Sarasota High's administrative team was made up of Principal Jones and numerous assistant principals. Both Ryan Chase and Becky Moyer served as assistant principals under Principal Jones during the 2016, 17, 2017, 18, and the 2018, 19 school years. Principal Jones, Assistant Principal Chase, and Assistant Principal Moyer all supervised respondents during these years at different times. This was a finding of facts, and you filed an exception to that, Ms. Deal?
In the MOI, and I don't know if you even have a copy of it, but it was dated October 10th, 2016. It was a memorandum of instruction from Mr. Jones. Him, I, and Becky Moyer met, this was shortly after I became an attendance clerk, which there was really no foundation for this, and nobody went to Mr. Jones and said, this was just another, in my opinion, harassment piece of paper. But at any rate, he wanted me to take my 15-minute breaks. I don't know if any of you have this piece of paper in front of you, but the lunches and the breaks, everybody eats at their desk, they still eat at their desk. And, but I was singled out for that specific, and he's got it in here, eating at my desk. Well, like I explained in the beginning of these proceedings, the attendance area is in a unsecure area. I had all my things...
This statement of fact led to that Principal Jones was there and the assistant principals? It doesn't talk about a memorandum of understanding at this time?
It says that that Chase supervisor responded, I'm trying to get to that part, where she says that Mr. Chase, and if you read in this MOI, all it says is, please collaborate with and obtain approval from Becky Moyer prior to changing policies, et cetera, et cetera. And of course, his role of attendance clerk is critical. That was a copy and paste from Mr. Kale's thing 10 years ago, or five years ago. But not one time did they ever tell me, that no one ever wrote me another memorandum or any other instruction saying that Mr. Chase was ever in charge of me, but yet he took over several proceedings. And I'm just like, I know you're assistant principal, but he was not my direct supervisor ever, and they want to claim that he was. The recording is quite humorous of them trying to tell me how all that happened, but, and I've got, I think, maybe some of the recording in there, maybe not, but it was quite humorous on, oh, I was this from two months and three days. Well, I was never under supervision except for Ms. Moyer and Mr. Jones, that I'm aware of, anytime, and there's nothing to say that I was ever under any supervisory, supervisory from Mr. Chase. I just wanted to clear that up. But yet, he did do a lot punishment to me, so.
Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, there was substantial competent evidence in the record. I point you to the trial transcript, page 378, where Mr. Chase testifies that he was her supervisor at one time while he was an assistant principal at Sarasota High School. Ms. Deal correctly points out that he also administered the second discipline of the progressive metric, which was the written reprimand, which would certainly be further evidence that he was her supervisor. So there is substantial competent evidence to support this finding of fact.
No one ever told me, I just want that clear.
Are there any comments from the public? Mr. Jones, would you like to testify who was the assistant principals under you, or did they supervise? Coming to the podium is Principal David Jones from Sarasota High.
I would just, we need to constrain our view of the exceptions to what's in the record as the whole.
All right, thank you.
Point out, I mean, he certainly is willing to make statement regarding this exception as a member of the public, who is also simultaneously an employee, but if the board wants to hear that in the context of public comment, that's fine, but the ruling and the vote needs to be based on the record as a whole.
I apologize. Any comments from the board? I will entertain a motion.
I move that the board reject this exception if it believes that competent substantial evidence supports the specific finding of fact, and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
Second. On item 15, the board has rejected 5-0, the voted yes to reject 5-0, the recommended order, page 5, number 4, exception. Item 16 refers to the recommended order, page 5, number 5, regarding a collective bargaining agreement.
I just wanted to...
Ms. Deal?
Yes, I just wanted to say that I definitely was subject to the entire collective bargaining agreement. That was just a confirmation, more or less, on that recommended order. It was just a confirmation for me, so.
It was a confirmation, not an exception?
Well, it's just, some of the, when I would mention certain things in the bargaining agreement, I would get shut down on it. So that's why I wanted to say, I'm entitled to everything in that bargaining agreement, not just one or two things. Don't shut me down when I'm trying to explain myself, maybe.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Robinson?
I had to add, ma'am.
Any comments from the public? See none, seeing none from the board. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the board reject this exception and believe it, believes that competent substantial evidence supports the specific finding of fact, and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
Second. On agenda item 16, recommended order, page 5, number 5, the board voted 5-0 to reject the exception. Item number 17, recommended order, page 6, number 6, item F, Article 21 of the CBA for progressive discipline. Ms. Deal?
My exception here is for F of this Article 21 of the CBA. F states that the employee and her representative shall be afforded a reasonable amount of time to prepare and present appropriate responses to the proposed actions under this article through step one of the grievance process, this amount of time to be mutually agreed on by the parties. If you will look, this is in the record, this is... If you will look, this is in the record. This is the petitioners' minutes from the meeting of August the 10, 2018. Mr. Jones starts these proceedings, and he asks D. White, can he ask some questions? I was not, I'm entitled to having these questions ahead of time so we can prepare. That did not happen in these meeting minutes. And if you can read it, it's petitioner's number, let me see. It's the one from August 10, 2018. And it states that Mr. Jones takes over the entire meeting, and he asks me questions that were not even, I wasn't even prepared to answer. So when you're going through those answers, it's just, I was blindsided by that. It just wasn't fair. That's why I'm stating that. And it was through the bargaining unit agreement. That's part of my provisions.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, thank you. This exception merely cites to provisions of the collective bargaining agreement. Other than that, it makes no findings of fact about Weingarten hearings or meetings or who took over or any of that. It is literally a citation to provisions of the CBA. And it just befuddles me how that could turn into something to do with a Weingarten hearing later on. So unless somebody's going to tell me that that's not what the CBA says, because I think it does, we gave it to the judge in verbatim. It was an exhibit, one of our exhibits. All she's doing is just citing the CBA here.
Correct. But she's citing something that didn't happen. And I mean, if you're going to cite something, and it's not, it didn't happen, where's my-
The cite, I believe, is the verbatim part of the contract. There isn't actions in here. It's just the contract that is cited, an item that you seem to be objecting to. Not any actions taken from it.
Well, they didn't fulfill their obligation with the, she wants to cite this, but nobody fulfilled that part of that article to me. That's why I accepted to it. I mean, it's blatant, once again, bias and harassment shown by Mr. Jones.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Just from the standpoint of, as Man mentioned, as we go through these, these are the finding of facts and not disputing whether or not it was a conclusion of law. So I just, from a time standpoint, and I'd certainly want to make sure everyone has the opportunity to speak, but just that we stick to that aspect. Did this exist? Do we have evidence that it does not exist, so that we can move forward?
Correct, thank you. We are going through the findings of facts at this time. And so is there any, I see no comments from the public or for the board. I will entertain a motion.
I move the board reject this exception if it believes that competent substantial evidence supports the specific finding of facts, and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
Second. Please vote on item 17. The board voted 5-0 to reject the exception to the recommended order, page six. Item 18, we move on to the exception of recommended order, page seven, number seven. Sarasota High's administration utilized meetings, known as Weingarten meetings, to make factual findings that would determine whether discipline was warranted for an employee. Employees were provided notice of the allegations against them and allowed to bring counsel or union representative to the hearings. And Ms. Deal has filed an exception to that fact?
Well, I guess probably the one before it would have answered to that one best.
It's your exception, 15.
And it says that the Weingarten hearings at Sarasota High are based on hearsay and solicited information. They're witch hunts, and that's plain and simple what the Weingarten hearings are, and you can ask other employees, that's what they are. It's trumped up, and it's terrible. It's a terrible process. And I think that some of that should be looked at, in my opinion, for the classified bargaining agreement about the progressive discipline. It just gives, it gives the administration the opportunity to bully their employees and to harass them. And that's just not, it's not fair to the employee, because progressive discipline says, "Go out and get these verbal reprimands and these Weingarten," it tells you to do that. So it gives them carte blanche to harass their employees. So they had no physical evidence on any of these Weingarten hearings. And if you will read them, you'll see, I don't even know what half of them, I'm like, no, don't remember that, don't understand that. If you read the Weingarten minute, meeting minutes, you'll see that on most of these Weingartens, I'm like, I have no clue what, why you're asking me these questions. They're just reaching for information, and then they conclude them, they conclude these Weingartens, and it's like, no matter what you say, you're guilty. And there's one specifically, it says almost through the whole thing, I don't even know of this incident, but yet I was guilty at the end. So it's not fair.
I don't believe these were pertinent to yours. I believe it just states that we utilize Weingarten hearings and-
Yeah, and they provided notice, and they don't, not, especially on the August 10, where Mr. Jones took over and asked the questions. I was not made aware of that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, there's ample substantial competent evidence to support. First off, the Weingarten requirement is from the United States Supreme Court, so we really don't have an option not to follow that. And it is not just followed in the Sarasota High School, it's followed in all the schools in this district and schools all over the state and the nation, because it comes from the United States Supreme Court. You'll find substantial competent evidence to support the general proposition for its use in the trial transcript, page 79, and the specific notices that went out to her in Exhibits 22, 32, 38, and 49 through 51. And Ms. Deal has cited not one scintilla of evidence to the contrary.
I see no comments from the public or the board. I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the board reject this exception if it believes that competent substantial evidence supports the specific finding of fact, and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
Second. Please vote. On item 18, the board voted 5-0 to reject the exception to the recommended order, page seven, number seven. Item 19 regards the recommended order, page nine, number 13, the statement of fact, Principal Heretic supervised Ms. Deal from 2003 to 2016. Ms. Deal received non-disciplinary MOIs from Heretic and assistant principals outlining the need to improve. Ms. Deal, you filed an exception to that?
Yes, under 13 years with Mr. Heretic, I received one evaluation. Now, the classified bargaining agreement again says that you have a performance evaluation, like, once every three years. I've had one, so.
I would object to this, Madam Chair. I mean, this is not what the finding of fact is about. I mean, I guess we could sit here all day, but I'm going to have to start asking or at least stating an objection, that she stay on point. What is the issue with this particular finding of fact as opposed to wandering off in someplace else?
Thank you.
I just would add, I want to make sure Ms. Deal has the opportunity, this is her chance to say what she wants to say. Ms. Deal, we would ask that you keep it relevant to each agenda item, because this is a long process. But I'm a little uncomfortable cutting her off. I understand where Mr. Robinson is coming from, but I'd rather let Ms. Deal to say everything that she wants to say here. This is her one chance to do that.
I would appreciate, too, that she says that if, but I agree, too, with Mr. Robinson, that we should stick to the item and the statement of fact that she's accepting, filing the exception to. And the statement of fact is that Heretic supervised you during that time. You received non-disciplinary MOIs, and that you were told to be more patient and respectful. So I guess, did you receive MOIs or not, as you testified to that, I suppose?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
I said, yes.
You did receive MOIs?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sure that this is going to be the way that they all go, because the recommended order is only stating things that really can't be accepted to, in my opinion. But the only way that I can, the only way I can get my story out is to accept them, and that's why that's, that's the simple language that I can use for this. I just wanted to show a pattern, because in 13 years, I get one MOI from Mr. Heretic and one evaluation. And in three years, with Mr. Jones coming back, I mean, I got the bums rushed out with progressive discipline, and it didn't even take him that long. And I mean, I'm in my attendance office two weeks, and he gives me an MOI for no reason. It was just, it's just harassment. And then you're going to put, you know, that's just-
And again, Ms. Deal, I appreciate your frustration, but as we sit here, we can't retry this. Your time to try the case before the judge was at the hearing, the time to object to the memorandums of understanding, or the Weingarten hearings was at those times, we can't retry those. The only thing we can do today is assess the facts and the conclusions of law that are presented in the recommended order. We are here to do the recommended order. We cannot rehear previous actions that were taken. We can only vote on, did this happen or didn't it happen, based on what you're telling us. And the agenda item says that Principal Heretic supervised you in memorandums of understanding, and that's what your objection needs to be, too.
Well, I was, I thought I was doing that, because he did give me one MOI. But like I said, the, it's okay. You might as well just move on, because this is going to be every single case. So we might as well just reject everything right now, or reject them, just keep on going, because we're going to be here all day otherwise, and-
We want to give you your chance to speak, but-
That's fine.
We want you to speak to the item and the facts.
Well, there's not going to be much I can say, then, because all she is is stating things that she just knows are true. And that's true. And I mean, but she's not stating what actually happened, I don't think, during the hearings. So she's just stating, oh, yeah, this happened. Well, it did happen. Of course it did. But I'm just trying to speak to that. And that's why I want to verbalize, that I want to speak to those. Yes, it did happen, but here's why. I mean, you know, or here's my reasoning for the exception. I just wanted that noted. Thank you.
Just to address that, Ms. Deal has the right to say to participate meaningfully in these proceedings and to exhaust her remedies how she deems fit, and, you know, within basic reasonableness of time, as long as it doesn't go on and on and on. I think we ought to indulge her in that, because this is her opportunity to do that.
Did she not also have an opportunity at the hearing to speak to these before the recommendation orders were made? And with a hearing of fact, we're looking at a fact right now.
Sure. Well, the board's obligation is to rule on the exceptions and the provisions of the recommended order that they challenge in the manner provided by Florida Statute 12057. That is related to Ms. Deal's opportunity to be heard and participate in this hearing and, you know, exercise her rights to due process. But those are not necessarily the same thing, and I think we're required to do both. So I would ask that we stick to our rulings based on the statutory criteria and also simultaneously give Ms. Deal all of the due process that she's entitled to in this hearing, so that she can have her fair say in this hearing.
My understanding of the explanation of the hearing is that we are not supposed to be retrying the case, or what we are supposed to be doing is looking at the facts, and that is in the recommended order. And if Ms. Deal can show that the facts in the recommended order are inaccurate or not withheld by the evidence that were put forward, this is what she needs to bring forward.
Sure.
But it has to be from the hearing, the things that were brought up at the hearing. We can't bring in new evidence to this meeting.
It has to be from the record as a whole, as that's defined in the statute. I just, I would caution, and I would give Ms. Deal a little bit of leeway here. I don't believe, Ms. Deal, that you're a lawyer. She certainly is entitled to-
And neither am I.
No, understood, no, understood. I guess, and an abundance of caution is what I'm talking about. I would give Ms. Deal some latitude to make all of the arguments that she wants. She's entitled to due process and to meaningfully participate in this. And frankly, if we don't give her that opportunity, she could, that could create liability for the district to not permit her to engage meaningfully and as thoroughly as she wants in this. And again, Ms. Deal, I think she's so far done a pretty good job of not-
Right.
-taking 10 minutes on each of these.
Right.
But I would afford her the latitude to say what she wants to say today, with the understanding that she's not a lawyer, and-
Right.
It might be a more of a meandering path than a lawyer would make, but we're going to give her the opportunity to do that, just because that's, in basic fairness, that's what due process is.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So item 19, I believe we've heard from Ms. Deal and from Mr. Robinson. I have no comments from the public or the board. I will entertain a motion.
I move the board reject this exception if it believes that competent substantial evidence supports the specific finding of fact, and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
Second, please vote. The board has voted on item 19, 5-0, to reject the exception to recommended order, page nine, page 13. Moving on to item 20. Recommended order, page 11, number 19, Principal Jones replaced Principal Heretic. Mr. Jones made the decision to move Ms. Deal back to the attendance desk in the front office to perform duties when she was designated to do so as attendance clerk. And Ms. Deal has filed an exception to this.
This just goes back to my original statement regarding the salary lane, that he took me out of the salary lane, stating, "I want to put you back in your proper salary lane." And that's what she says he did. However, in the interim of that, he took someone from my same salary lane, Jane Bell, and put her in that position. I just, I'm really real consistent on proving harassment from Mr. Jones. I know that's, my misconduct is the part of this case, is the case. However, how they derived that, you need all the information. And in my opinion, David Jones, that was harassment, blatant harassment, by moving me and putting someone there the same salary lane after he told me that's why he was moving me. Period.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, this finding of fact is supported by substantial competent evidence, specifically the testimony of David Jones at the transcript, page 78. Blatant mental harassment is not an issue in this case, and frankly, there was zero evidence of that to boot.
I see no comments from the public or the board. I will entertain a motion on agenda item 20.
I move the board reject this exception based upon substantial evidence supporting the finding and the proceedings upon the findings were based upon the essential requirements of law.
Second. On agenda item 20, the board votes 5-0 to reject the exception to the finding of fact on the recommended order, page 11, number 19. Item 21, recommended order, page 11, finding of fact, number 20. Shortly after resuming her position as attendance clerk, respondent received a memorandum of understanding from Principal Jones on numerous issues.
I think we just did number 20, didn't we?
We're 21. No, it was in the recommended order, page 11, the statement, the fact, item number 20, is, we're on item number 21.
Okay, well, I just wanted to clarify. Okay. My apologies, we are on item number 21, which is what I thought. And when I heard 20, it made me think we were readdressing one, and I wanted to make sure we stayed on order, so my apologies.
Yeah, I went through and numbered the agenda items and the recommended order numbers and the finding of fact numbers, but this is the finding of fact, number 20. After resuming her position as attendance clerk, she had a memorandum of understanding from Mr. Jones. This is item 21. Ms. Deal?
This is the same MOI that I was talking about earlier, dated October 10, 2016. It states here, was it, her failure to take consistent breaks and her use of, okay. Failure to take consistent breaks. We get, by the bargaining unit agreement, we get two 15-minute breaks a day, plus a half-hour lunch. But that doesn't happen in attendance very often, and that's from years of doing that job. And why I was getting reprimanded for that, I still don't know the reason. Because you can't leave your things out in the open. The students had come in there several times, messed with things on my desk. They pushed the emergency button, which comes to the landings, three times, or two or three times. But, yeah, you want me to leave this area. And there's no protocols. There were no... And I did collaborate with Ms. Moyer on everything. And the only reason about the radio, Mr. Jones had to come up to it very closely, and he says, "Well, let's not play that too loud." He came, that was one of the, only four times he was in my office. And I never adjusted the volume after he left. There was never a complaint about it. It wasn't loud enough to even hardly hear it. You had to stand right on top of it. So, that was harassed, unwarranted harassment, once again, from Mr. Jones in this memorandum of instruction. It was just, it was relentless. And it was just mental anguish all the time from him. The harassment was constant. It was consistent, and everything he did was towards me. The harassment was bad. And he wouldn't do it to me personally, but he would do it in a roundabout ways. And it was just uncomfortable, and it made for a hostile work environment.
Thank you. You're welcome. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. Paragraph 20, finding of fact, is supported by substantial competent evidence, specifically the MOI is exhibit 18. It states verbatim what she was counseled on, and that's what's contained in paragraph 20. In addition, it's in the trial transcript, pages 103 to 110.
Seeing no comments from the public or the board, I will entertain a motion on agenda item 21.
I move that the board reject this exception if it believes that competent substantial evidence supports the specific finding of fact and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
Second.
The board has voted on item 21, 5-0, to reject the exception to recommended order, page 11, finding of fact, 20. Agenda item 22, the recommended order, page 11, finding number 21. On December 1, 2016, Principal Jones received a complaint from a parent complaining Ms. Deal had made inappropriate comment. The student suffers from medical conditions and attempting to dress school apetisms. This is the one that I think had the brother involved?
Yeah, well, this was a twofold situation because it almost seems like it was lumped together. But there was a brother and a sister. The brother came in. He was very rude, and it, he states, it stated in the minutes that he was rude, not me. I'm just pointing that out, and it is in the minutes. It's there. And the one, the student suffers from medical condition? I found a letter that that, I think, is referring to. My name is not in this letter. It does never say my name. I've never seen this piece of paper until it ended up on Mr. Robinson's agenda or his exhibits. I never saw this letter. And according to the classified bargaining unit agreement, once again, the personnel record, you cannot, you cannot just do that. You can't just throw a letter in there and then put it into your exhibits that I've never even seen before. I didn't sign this letter. It's not, I never saw, I never got any meeting or anything regarding this ever. I don't even know where this letter came from, and my name is not in it. If you want to refer to petitioners 19, that's the letter I'm referring to, I will stand that I've never seen this letter until he put it into his exhibits. And that that's against the classified bargaining agreement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. The exception is that she was never made aware of the complaint, when in reality, if you look at the exhibits that the district offered, 19 through 25, these were, both of these incidents was paragraph 21, and we'll talk about 22 next. Both of those were the subject of a Weingarten hearing. So, she got the notice, the union got the notice. She participated in the Weingarten hearing. So, if the exception is only that she was not made aware of the complaint, that's just not correct based on the exhibits. So, there is substantial competent evidence to support these findings. And I'd also remind the board about the concept of administrative finality. This was one of the stepping stones that we talked about earlier in progressive discipline. Thank you.
I see no comments from the public or the board. I will entertain a motion.
May I comment, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just want to say that the Weingarten meeting that he's referring to from February 2017 has no reference that I am aware of, that I can see that that was ever, that was not put in there regarding this student, regarding this specific student. There's nothing in the Weingarten meeting minutes, which is petitioners number 24 and 25 and 26. I mean, I'm sorry. It's petitioners 24, pages 17, 18, and 19, regarding that student that I'm aware of. And I never saw that letter, once again, because it states you're supposed to be able to see the letters or anything put in your file, sign it, and you get a copy of it if you want. Well, they never showed that to me. How can that even?
Thank you. Mr. Edwards?
Yeah, the place that I'm uncomfortable, for me personally making this vote, is that I would believe that the time to say that I never saw this letter would have been in your opportunity to cross-examine or to plead your case, and you didn't do that. So, you're asking me to believe that you never saw the letter, which I'm, you know, you have no reason to lie to me. But it, it's hard for me to vote on it here when you had an opportunity to justify that and to do all the research and all the legwork to justify your claim. So, I just want to put out there that it's a difficult position for me to be in to vote on that when you had a chance to do the due diligence and you passed it.
Well, if you would have been at the hearing, I just want to point out, if any of you would have been at the hearing, and the objection after objection after objection, it was exhausting. I couldn't do it anymore. Not mentally, not physically, no. You had to be there. It was just, it was ridiculous, the objections that were coming. I would open my mouth, "Objection." You know, I mean, how can you even perform when that's happening every time you open your mouth? So, that's the reason I didn't continue that. I wanted to go to, I wanted to get away from that whole prejudice element. And that's the way I felt, that not only Mr. Robinson, but the judge, all of them, it was just, it was not a fair situation. I just wanted it to end because it was not fair. And if you would have been there, you might have felt yourself belittled. It was, it was just, it was degrading on how I was literally treated. And I mean, you ask, like, Mr. Jones gets a question or what, you know, and everybody believes everybody except for me. And I, you know, it's uncomfortable and it's unfair. So, that's why I did not continue the hearing. And I made the motion for a mistrial, and it was rejected for materials that were missing, that were destroyed. And when you, you know, when you get shot down, where else can you go? So...
You know, as Mr. Duggan has stated, you were not represented by an attorney there. An attorney would have taken some of that off of you, and I can understand why you weren't.
Correct.
That's why we're giving you a little more leeway here to present this case. But as Mr. Edwards has said, too, it's frustrating to us...
Yes, ma'am.
Because we can't hear the case. We can only rule on what is presented to us, and that is the recommended order and your objections to the recommended order and the statement of facts and the conclusions of law in the recommended order.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know it's frustrating for you.
Yes.
And sometimes it's for us, but, you know, we're not here to hear the case. We're here to hear your exceptions to the findings of the case. I hope you can understand the difference of that.
I do.
And I understand your frustration, and I hope you can understand ours, too.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, this is, you know, I'm not a lawyer, but I mean, and the law's fascinating. Let me tell you, it's very fascinating. I mean, I've done a lot of nighttime reading.
And it gets expensive. We know that, too.
When they say, it always cracks me up when they say, "If you can't afford one." Well, I don't make $600 an hour, so I know I can, but you're not going to give me one, so, you know. But anyway, that was just...
I will take a motion on item 22. I move the board reject this exception if it believes that the competent substantial evidence supports this specific finding of fact and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirement of law. The board votes 5-0 to reject the exception. And on the recommended order, page 11, finding of fact, number 21. Let's move on to number 23. Recommended order, page 11, number 23, on February 7, 2017, as a result of these incidents and after following the proper procedures under the CBA, the Assistant Principal Moyer issued Ms. Deal a verbal reprimand for unprofessional behavior. Respondent did not grieve this action. Ms. Deal?
Yes, ma'am. I did not grieve this action on advice of, from my then representative from the union. And this is a questionable even signing. If you look at the memorandum, it's dated February the 10th. My signature is almost a month later. Who knows why, but that just seems a little suspect, that it's a month later that I signed this. And it, honestly, that's my signature. I won't deny that. And that's my everything, but, you know, it could be a copy and a paste from some other document. I don't know that, but it's a month later. Okay? So, I had a problem with this whole verbal reprimand, which is part of the progressive discipline. We have to check all the little boxes, and that was one of them. So, we got to check verbal reprimand by Ms. Moyer. So, once again, did I see this? Possibly, maybe, probably, maybe, I don't know. But did I sign it timely a month later? I don't, you know, like I said, there's a lot of wishy-washy stuff in this whole entire proceedings. A lot. There's a lot of questionable evidence.
I think there's something that in the Weingarten hearings, you're giving something to, just like in this order, you're giving what, you know, here's the information, what's your proposed order? And then there's times to make exceptions to that. I think in the Weingarten hearings, too, that you're given this, and there's times to file exceptions to what was found? I'm not sure. There's, that might account for that 30 days.
From the Weingarten meetings? No one ever said I could. I don't know if I could.
But there was a Weingarten hearing.
Nobody ever said I could.
All right.
I wish they would have. No, ma'am, I never heard that one, but thank you for that.
February 27, February 1, 2017, Weingarten here. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. There was substantial competent evidence in the record. She just told you, even though she's not supposed to testify, that it is her signature. I don't know why the 30 days makes any difference. It was, the discipline was accepted, and it was not grieved. And those are also facts within the record. So, there really isn't anything else to say about that.
I see no comments from the public or the board. I will entertain a motion at this time on agenda item 23.
I move that the board reject this exception if it believes that the competent substantial evidence supports the specific finding of fact and that proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
Second.
The board voted 5-0 to reject the exception to the finding of fact, number 23. On item 23, see, our numbers have caught up for a while here. The findings of facts and the agenda items line up. Agenda item 24, recommended order, page 12, number 24, finding of fact, September 25, 2017. The administration was informed that respondent had made inappropriate statements regarding a student suffering a seizure to a parent who was signing another student out from the school. Ms. Deal, you have filed an exception to this?
It's explained in the Weingarten minute, meeting minutes again. If you look at petitioners number 33, page 131, paragraph 3 and 4, it's all explained. It's all explained. So, I don't know why this was written, but it really, on 33, it states that I was trying to help out. What was going on was one of our children were, one of our regular little gals was seizing, and people rushed in and were yelling at, screaming, trying to get the nurse, parents, kids. It was pandemonium, is what it was. So, it's explained right here that I was allegedly having, I don't even understand that at all. But any rate, Mr. Chase stated that two individuals can clarify, which they did. They clarified that I was in there. I was on the thing trying to get assistance for this child who was seizing on our campus. And it states it right here that that's what I was doing. However, Mr. Chase deemed it necessary to go ahead and find me guilty once again of doing my job. That's what I want to say on this.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson.
The exhibit she cites to you is the Weingarten meeting questions and answers. There is substantial competent evidence to, with regard to this finding of fact. And again, the doctrine of administrative finality does not let us go back and revisit that issue, which is what she's asking you to do and what she asked us to cite to do.
Well, I'm sorry. This says regarding a student suffering from a seizure to a... Well, I'm sorry, this says regarding a student suffering from a seizure to a parent. I wasn't talking to a parent, and it states that substantial evidence states, in the petitioner's exhibit 33, Ms. White asked if administration had spoken to Ginger and Donna to get their perspective. These data, Ms. Steele was not sharing information, but was stating the information to Ginger, the nurse. Because she couldn't hear a radio, because she was dealing with a diabetic student. And like I explained that area before, there's no way that that situation wasn't heard by everyone in the room. There's just no possible way that that was done. And I wasn't the only one. Actually, there's a statement that I had in my exhibits that stated that Donna, Judge came in screaming with parents in the room, but nothing was ever said to her. But yet, I'm trying to assist, and I get in trouble, you know? Back to the same old, it's harassment, playing softball. But, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no comments from the public or the board, I'll entertain a motion on item 24.
I move that the board reject this exception and believe that competent substantial evidence supports the specific findings of fact, and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
Second. On item 24, the board voted five zero to reject the exception to the finding of fact, page 12, number 24. Item 25. On September 26th, this is page 12, number 25, finding of fact, September 26th, 2017, respondent was involved in an incident in which she allegedly discussed and laughed at a student's medical issue with a teacher and the students present, refused to allow the parent, teacher, the student to contact her parents, just to request a change of clothes due to a menstrual accident, and demanded the student's parents call, and discuss the condition in front of other parents. You filed an exception to that?
Yes, ma'am. And I do want to say that Mr. Robinson...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, when you're leaning over.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Did you take the microphone with you?
I'm sorry.
Okay.
And I just want to state that Mr. Robinson's whole depiction of this incident, he wasn't there. And what this young lady says is here, the first thing she says is, yesterday, on her statement, "I went to the clinic because I had a girl emergency." My position, I've worked in attendance for a long time, off and on. I know the protocol. I know it well. If you come to attendance because you have a medical issue, I direct you straight to the clinic, which is only a doorway. I would never engage, for as long as this young lady said I did. I mean, this is a lengthy, this is all lengthy. And at the bottom of her statements, it says that my daughter got special treatment. Well, if you look at the Wyngarden minutes, my daughter and I left, and I don't even know if it was me that this was even, they have no evidence except this. This was hearsay, and there's no way that I'm going to spend that much time with someone with a medical emergency. If you've got a medical emergency, I'm going to say, here's the clinic, you need to go out through them, as I have done 100 times. I don't hold students up who have a medical emergency, why would I do that? It just made no sense to me. And this young lady, she goes, oh, my goodness, all the stuff she goes on and on about, I think, I asked my daughter, I said, "Does she have a problem with you in middle school?" That's the kind of thing I got out of this, was because her daughter got special treatment. I'm like, "Did you guys have a problem?" My daughter didn't even know her, doesn't, you know, she wasn't even there, she doesn't remember this either. If my daughter was there, who was getting special treatment, we probably, one of us would have remembered that. I'm, she might, you know, my daughter, we left on one of these days. She could have been in there waiting for me to take her home, but for me to take her home, not for her to call her sister. I just want to point that out, and that's petitioner's number 31. And this whole thing is just erroneous, I have to tell you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. This finding of fact is supported by substantial competent evidence. The Wyngarden hearing and exhibits are in evidence, as well as the testimony of Ryan Chase, who conducted the Wyngarden hearing. And again, remind that she is not only testifying today, but also challenging prior discipline, which is subject to the administrative finality rule. Thank you.
Seeing no comments from the public or the board, I will entertain a motion on agenda item 25.
I move the board reject this exception if it believes that competent substantial evidence supports the specific finding of fact, and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
On agenda item 25, the board voted to reject the exception to the recommended order on page 12, number 25, finding of fact. Item 26. Recommended order, page 12, finding of fact, number 25. After an investigation and filing the procedures in the CBA, on October 5th, 2017, Assistant Principal Chase issued a written reprimand to Ms. Steele for unprofessional behavior in connection with the September 25th and 26th incidents.
Madam Chair.
Did not grieve.
Did you say number 25 or number 26? It's number 26.
It's number 26, and finding of law number 26. But it was September 25th and 26th, lots of numbers.
It's...
Ms. Steele?
It's 25 or 26? No, I'm confused. I thought we just said 24. I'm sorry.
I have agenda item 26.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. So, we're agenda item 26.
Thank you.
And that has the, it's on recommended order, page 12, and it's finding of fact number 26 regarding the investigation and the Mr. Principal, Assistant Principal Chase written reprimand.
The written reprimand, yeah, there's just no legal, there's no evidence supporting this reprimand, period, from Mr. Chase. And it says that after an investigation, to my knowledge, there was no investigation at all for any of this, none of it. So, I don't know what investigation they're referring to, but an investigation did not happen. Hearsay definitely happened a lot, but as far as physical evidence or any other thing for this, they didn't have it. They didn't have it. And for him, just, yeah, he said he did, but he didn't. So, there's no evidence to support this claim at all. And the article, once again, in the maintenance of the personnel record, if you, if you look at all, if you look at all these memorandums and all these things that these people are writing about me, they copied and pasted from Chris Kale's 2010. And it's sad, because you can't even come up with your own verbiage, but if you look at the bottom of all these, it's got the same thing. Even Mr. Chase did the same thing. They all copied and pasted. And that, you know, if you're going to go back that far, and you're going to copy and paste from somebody, you know, at least change up some of the verbiage, maybe they did, maybe one word or two, but, and that's just, you know, trying to show a pattern, I understand, but, you know, from 10 years ago till the next one, it's just a little suspect. At any rate, yes, I object to that, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, the doctrine of administrative finality prevents her from challenging this discipline. I would point out to the board that what all of these administrators are pulling from is the principles of professional conduct for the education profession. So, the fact that they're all the same is not that one's copying another, they're all copying it out of the administrative principles that guide and govern all teachers and administrative support staff in the state of Florida.
And I understand that it was not grieved at the time?
No, ma'am.
By grieving, she didn't object to it at the time?
No.
She signed it?
Did.
I see no comments from the public or the board. I will entertain a motion for item, agenda item 26. Please.
I move to reject this exemption and believe that competent substantial evidence supports the specific finding of fact, and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
On agenda item 26, the board voted to reject the exception to the recommended order, page 12, finding of fact 26. Agenda item 27 regards the recommended order, page 12, finding of fact 27. On August 7th, 2018, the administration received two reports from staff regarding inappropriate behavior by Mrs. Steele during the distribution of locker assignments. Ms. Steele complained to students, parents, and left early for the day. Ms. Steele?
Oh, yeah. I love this one, because the recommended order says two, and if you look on the, if you look on the Wyngarden meeting, at first it says numerous, then it says five, and then you only end up with one witness statement. So, was it two? Was it numerous? Was it five? This is so full of everything. And then this is the one where Griffin Holcomb, the union copy, is signed by him, and it's got typos in it. However, the one that is presented to me as exhibit, petitioner's exhibit number 37, has all been cleaned up, not signed. I don't even know where it came from, honestly. So, these two documents are different in the respect that one's signed, one's not. This one has typos, this one doesn't, and this one's not even signed. And it's, that would be, putting this in here is anonymous, and that is against our classified bargaining agreement. You can't put anonymous materials into a site file. This is that. They, you know, ruled for it. It's, it was ruled that this is a piece of evidence, but it's anonymous. There's no signature on it. Give me something with a signature. I didn't, you know, I, there's just, I just wanted to point that out, so much wrong with things today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, there was substantial competent evidence to prove this finding of fact, and you don't really have to look any farther than exhibits P. 37 and R. 11. Those are the two statements she's referring to in the, in the finding of fact.
I see no comments from the public or the board. I will entertain a motion.
I move that the board reject the exception and believe that competent substantial evidence supports the specific finding of fact, and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirement of law.
Second. On agenda item 27, the board voted five zero to reject the exception to recommended order on page 12, finding of fact number 27. Agenda item 28.
Madam Chair, can I request a brief recess? We've been going three hours.
Oh, please.
Restroom, possibly?
All right. It is 4:00 PM. We will take a 10-minute recess to stretch and whatever else you need to do. I see no comments from the public or the Board. I will entertain a motion.
I move that the Board reject the exception and believe that competent substantial evidence supports this specific finding of fact and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirement of law.
On Agenda Item 27, the Board voted 5-0 to reject the exception to Recommended Order on Page 12, Finding of Fact Number 27.
Madam Chair, can I request a brief recess? We've been going three hours.
Oh, please.
Restroom, possibly?
It is 4:00 PM. We will take a 10-minute recess to stretch and whatever else you need to do. I see no comments from the public or the Board. I will entertain a motion. I move that the Board reject this exception if it believes that competent substantial evidence supports this specific finding of fact and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law. On Agenda Item 28, the Board voted 5-0 to reject the exception to Recommended Order on Page 12, Finding of Fact Number 27.
Madam Chair, can I request a brief recess? We've been going three hours.
Oh, please.
Restroom, possibly?
It is 4:00 PM. We will take a 10-minute recess to stretch and whatever else you need to do. I see no comments from the public or the Board. I will entertain a motion.
I move that the Board reject this exception if it believes that competent substantial evidence supports this specific finding of fact and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
On Agenda Item 28, the Board voted 5-0 to reject the exception to Recommended Order on Page 12, Finding of Fact Number 27. Madam Chair, can I request a brief recess? We've been going three hours. Oh, please.
Restroom, possibly?
It is 4:00 PM. We will take a 10-minute recess to stretch and whatever else you need to do. I see no comments from the public or the Board. I will entertain a motion. I move that the Board reject this exception if it believes that competent substantial evidence supports this specific finding of fact and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law. Second, please vote. On Agenda Item 28, the Board voted 5-0 to reject the exception to Recommended Order on Page 12, Finding of Fact Number 27. Madam Chair, can I request a brief recess? We've been going three hours. Oh, please.
Restroom, possibly?
It is 4:00 PM. We will take a 10-minute recess to stretch and whatever else you need to do. (audio cuts out)[950.12][950.12]89.19 I see no comments from the public or the Board. I will entertain a motion. I move that the Board reject this exception if it believes that competent substantial evidence supports this specific finding of fact and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law. Second, please vote. On Agenda Item 28, the Board voted 5-0 to reject the exception to Recommended Order on Page 12, Finding of Fact Number 27. Agenda Item 28- Madam Chair, can I request a brief recess? We've been going three hours. Oh, please.
Restroom, possibly?
It is 4:00 PM. We will take a 10-minute recess to stretch and whatever else you need to do. (audio cuts out)[1030.12][1030.12]89.19 I see no comments from the public or the Board. I will entertain a motion. I move that the Board reject this exception if it believes that competent substantial evidence supports this specific finding of fact and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law. Second, please vote. On Agenda Item 28, the Board voted 5-0 to reject the exception to Recommended Order on Page 12, Finding of Fact Number 27. Agenda Item 28- Madam Chair, can I request a brief recess? We've been going three hours. Oh, please.
Restroom, possibly?
It is 4:00 PM. We will take a 10-minute recess to stretch and whatever else you need to do. (audio cuts out)[1100.12][1100.12]89.19 I see no comments from the public or the Board. I will entertain a motion. I move that the Board reject this exception if it believes that competent substantial evidence supports this specific finding of fact and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law. Second, please vote. On Agenda Item 28, the Board voted 5-0 to reject the exception to Recommended Order on Page 12, Finding of Fact Number 27. Agenda Item 28- Madam Chair, can I request a brief recess? We've been going three hours. Oh, please.
Restroom, possibly?
It is 4:00 PM. We will take a 10-minute recess to stretch and whatever else you need to do. (audio cuts out)[1163.12][1163.12]89.19 I see no comments from the public or the Board. And I might say, you know, again, this is one of those same instances, Ms. Deal, that, you know, we can't retry.
Right.
But again, if you had legal representation, it might have helped you understand, but our hands are tied.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's fine. No, I understand. I mean, like, you know, you guys are just like me. We're just like, I'm flying blind here a lot. I've learned a lot, but I still have a lot to learn, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion from the Board.
I move that the Board reject this exception if it believes that competent substantial evidence supports this specific finding of fact and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
We're missing a vote. There we go. The Board has voted 5-0 to reject Agenda Item 28, the recommended order, the exception to the recommended order, Page 13, Number 30. Agenda Item Number 29 is the recommended order, Page 13, Number 31. On November 2, Ms. Deal had an incident with a student, Janice Burke, in the front office. And according to Ms. Deal's recommended order, proposed recommended order, Ms. Burke's entered, the attendants' office told Ms. Deal that she was there to see Ms. Garland and asked Ms. Deal where Ms. Garland was. Ms. Deal claims she replied she did not keep Ms. Garland's schedule. Ms. Deal?
Well, that's all true and correct. All that happened. And the reason for my exception is, they didn't, they didn't ask Mary Belvin, like I explained before, the only eyewitness to this entire thing who was on the witness list, to come and testify. I mean, why would, and, and in the Wine Garden meeting minutes for this specific incident, Mr. Jones, he says, "Do not discuss this with Mary Belvin." Yeah, why? I mean, she, this was even after I already discussed it with her, and she had told me verbatim she did not make a statement. However, there is a statement in, that Mr. Jones signed, that he took her statement. She told me herself, and I don't see any reason for her to lie to me, that she didn't make a statement. But yet, here it is, with his signature on one of them, and somebody else's signature on another one of them, two different signatures, and one is P. 44 with David Jones in the middle of the page, which is not normal for anyone, I don't think. I think he's signed to the left maybe, or to the right. And then the same one, my Exhibit R. 17, is another signature with the same verbiage. But the bottom line here, besides the documentation being skewed and not signed by the same person, which is probably false, we'll just go with, I'm alleging it is, they didn't call Mary Belvin. Why wouldn't you call your prime witness of the whole entire incident to the stand, unless she didn't make this statement? And this is not true. So that's where I stand with this one, and I know you're going to reject it, but I've got to tell you the background to it. And I just, I just want you to know that, that that's the reason for my exception to this, that the documentation doesn't add up to what actually happened.
Thank you.
And, and the film is missing, which shouldn't be missing either, so.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, I'd just direct you to her first comment, when she said, "Everything there and is true." Means it's supported by substantial competent evidence.
That's correct. Thank you. No comments from the public or the Board. I will entertain a motion.
I move the Board reject this exception if it believes that competent substantial evidence supports this specific finding of fact and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
On Agenda Item Number 29, the Board rejects the exception to Recommended Order, Page 13, Number 31, Finding of Fact. We now go to Agenda Item 30, reference to Recommended Order, Page 13, Finding of Fact 32. In her PRO, Ms. Deal also claims she asked Ms. Burke's for a hall pass, at which point Ms. Burke got upset and started verbally attacking Ms. Deal. Ms. Deal also claims Ms. Burke became physically aggressive. Ms. Deal, however, did not testify and offered no credible evidence of the incident, although other evidence establishes they were both yelling. There is no evidence that Ms. Burke's was physically aggressive or started the argument. Ms. Deal, you-
Yeah, I wish I would have, once again, I'm going to refer to Rob Robinson's transcript of my deposition, because that was my testimony. That, well, we had two partial depositions, that was my partial testimony, if you will. And it's part of the record, and it does have a portion where it does state that Ms. Burke's, this exact verbiage, that I asked her for a pass, she had her earbuds in, she verbally attacked me, she was being aggressive, she was. And had we have the film, that is missing, that would all be proven. And Mr. Jones knew that this incident was the last, the very last step of progressive discipline. He knew that. Why on earth would you destroy a film or not procure a film of this incident if this is the last feather in the cap for progressive discipline against your employee? That's my question. So I know it's going to be rejected, but I just want that out there on the record. Why would you do that? Why would you destroy film and the last step of progressive discipline, ever? You want all the evidence you can have, obviously, to get rid of your employee, or whatever the, the agenda is there, but, yeah, why would you destroy that?
Thank you, Ms. Deal.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. Justice Tsai actually takes the first two sentences directly out of Ms. Deal's proposed recommended order. And in that recommended order, you're telling the judge what you think the facts are and what you think the conclusions of law ought to be. So I think from that basis, there is no question it's supported by substantial competent evidence. It makes no mention of any video. It does simply point out that there was no evidence that the student was physically aggressive or started the argument, which is correct. There was no evidence of that. And again, reminds us all that Ms. Deal refused to testify. Thank you.
Just an addendum, I have my deposition, and that is in the record, and that's on the transcript.
Ms. Deal?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That is in the transcript, and I wish I would have, I got the transcript, but I'm not going to go through it right now. But I think I supplied a copy to maybe Dr. Asplin of the transcript, maybe Patrick, Mr. Dugan. I might have given you a copy of the whole entire transcript, because it was quite lengthy.
Is this a transcript of your deposition?
Yes, ma'am, and that's my testimony. So that's why I didn't testify, because everything that I'm saying in here is, is in that transcript. It is in the transcript, and this was taken at the now-defunct Kirk Pinkerton well before any of these hearings. So it's, it speaks volumes, and it really does, so that's why. Thank you.
Seeing no comment from the public or the Board, I will entertain a motion on Agenda Item 30.
I make a motion, the Board reject the exception if it believes that competent substantial evidence supports this specific finding of fact and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
On Agenda Item 30, the Board has voted 5-0 to reject the exception to the recommended order, Page 13, Finding of Fact 32. Item 31, regarding the recommended order, Page 13, Finding of Fact Number 33. Regardless, Denise Massey, the school's security aide and a former New York City police officer, testified as to what she witnessed that day. The end of sign finds Ms. Massey's testimony is unbiased, credible, convincing. Her testimony is also corroborated by various witnesses' statements to the investigative file. Ms. Deal, you have written an exception to this?
Yes. I honestly do not believe that her testimony is corroborated by anybody. The witness statements, like I said, are signed, not signed, signed by two different people. Once again, we go through that, down that road. So I don't think that that's corroboration. And in the recording, and I know that I did send a copy of this, I think, to Dr. Asplin and to- and to Dugan, Mr. Dugan. But in the recording, because I don't trust the transcripts from the hearing, that's the reason I didn't purchase them, they're just... I've had such a bad thing with them. So, that being said, the recording did state that Judge Tsai was thinking I was even going to impeach this witness, because she was... Her statement was so erroneous. And then she turns right around in her recommended order and states that Ms. Massey was unbiased and it was credible and convincing. But yet, if you listen to it on this recording, you'll see that Judge Tsai thought, "I was going to impeach this witness," because her witness statement was so, so bad.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. The Paragraph 33 is supported by substantial competent evidence from the testimony of Denise Massey. It's not that long. She was or is a security aide at Sarasota High School. She is a former New York City police officer, and she did witness part of what happened that day. The remainder of this is the judge's determination of her credibility. And that lies, as I've indicated elsewhere in my response, solely with the administrative law judge. They get to determine credibility of witnesses. And so, all I can see here is Ms. Deal doesn't agree with the determination of who was credible and who was not, and that's not an exception that can be ruled on here today in her favor. Thank you.
Seeing no comments from the public or the Board, I will entertain a motion on Agenda Item 31.
I move that the Board reject this exception and believe that competent substantial evidence supports this specific findings of fact, and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
Second. Please vote. On Agenda Item 31, the Board has voted 5-0 to reject the exception to the recommended order, Page 13, Finding of Fact 33. We move on to Agenda Item 32. Is on the recommended order, Page 13 to 14, Finding of Fact 34. Somewhere between 11:00 AM and noon, Ms. Deal called Ms. Massey for assistance in the front office on the school radio. Ms. Massey arrived, et cetera. Ms. Deal?
Yes, ma'am. The statement for Ms. Massey, supposed, the supposed P-45, which is the petitioner's number 45, and is a statement by Ms. Massey, apparently, on November 2nd, 2018, once again, is not signed. We don't know who even took the statement. It just says, "I interviewed." It doesn't even tell you who did it. It's very vague. It's erroneous, and it's not signed, and it's anonymous. I don't even know who wrote this. So how can that even be part of this? And having... This is the part I don't understand. The judge kept accepting all these, the petitioners exhibits, even though they were not signed. They were erroneous from the beginning, and they had the two signature... I mean, she's accepting all of these. I understand she, you know, she was upset at me, but that showed the bias, and another reason, I was looking at you, Mr. Edwards, is that's another reason I shut my thing down so quickly, because with things like this, you're going to accept this information that's not signed, don't know who wrote it, and you're going to put it in the record? Why? It's not even legally binding. I mean, it might be to Mr. Robinson, or whoever, but there's nothing on here. And if you look at the public record laws, this is not handled correctly. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. This finding of fact is supported by substantial competent evidence. If you look at trial transcript, Pages 323 through 345, testimony of Ms. Massey, as well as petitioning exhibits 44 through 48, all provide ample evidence of what Ms. Tsai witnessed and testified to that day. Thank you.
Seeing no comment from the public or the Board, I will, at this time, entertain a motion on Agenda Item 32.
I move that the Board reject this exception if it believes that competent substantial evidence supports this specific finding of fact, and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
Second. Please vote. On Agenda Item 32, the Board voted 5-0 to reject the exception to the recommended order on Pages 13 to 14, Number 34. Agenda Item 33 is regards to the recommended order, Page 14, Finding of Fact Number 40. Ms. Massey was interviewed separately by Principal Jones and Assistant Principal Chase regarding the incident, et cetera. Ms. Deal?
Once again, if you just look at these statements, the one here from Mr. Chase says, "The student said..." "The student said she then sat down in the chairs to wait for Ms. Garland and put her earbuds in." Now, we all know, I've already said, I had to call security to have her removed, so that part of the statement is definitely not true, or allegedly not true. The young lady never sat down. Security swooped in, took her out, never had time to even speak to Denise Massey, ever. However, Mr. Chase is claiming in this witness statement, Number P-46, yes, that she sat back down and put her earbuds in. Once again, this whole entire case is all on hearsay. Not one eyewitness was involved with these proceedings. Not one eyewitness. They didn't call one eyewitness to these proceedings. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Yes. Paragraph 40 is supported by substantial competent evidence. I would direct the Board to the trial transcript, Pages 161. In addition, Pages 334 and 396. In addition, our exhibits 45, 46, and 47 also provide the substantial competent backup for Mr. Chase's interview of Ms. Burks. Thank you.
Seeing no comment from the public or the Board, I will entertain a motion on Agenda Item 33.
I move that the Board reject this exception and believe there is competent substantial evidence to support the specific finding as a fact, that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
Second. Please vote. On Agenda Item 33, the Board has voted 5-0 to reject the exception to the recommended order, Page 14, Finding of Fact Number 40. Agenda Item 34. I again held it down too long and lost it. Here we go. Agenda Item 34, Recommended Order, Pages 14 to 15, Finding of Fact 41. As part of their investigation, both Principal Jones and Assistant Principal Chase reviewed a video of the incident. The video had no audio. The audio was not retained and was not offered into evidence at the final hearing. The undersigned finds that this testimony regarding what was in the video is not helpful in determining what happened between Ms. Deal and Ms. Burks. Ms. Deal, you have filed an exception to that comment?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. You can't prove something that you can't find, or can't be presented. So, once again, 918.13 tampering or fabricating or destroying evidence, that's what I'm going with for this one. And the exception, actually, it says that Mr. Jones and Mr. Chase reviewed the video of the incident. Ironically, Mr. Chase wasn't even involved in the Wine Garden Meeting Minutes. And it states on Page 3, Page 154 of the petitioner's 53, that Mr. Dugan and Mr. Jones and Ms. Deal looked at the film, and not Mr. Chase. So this is an erroneous statement. Mr. Chase... I don't know where that information came from, but as far as I know, Mr. Chase never saw that film. But Ms. Moyer, I think, did, because she testified that she would have sent it to Mr. Jones via email. I just want that to be in the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, if you look at the testimony of Mr. Chase, he clearly says he reviewed the video. In addition, Principal Jones was the only other one to testify about the video. As we recall, Ms. Deal did not testify. I thought this was a very fair way for the administrative law judge to handle this issue, because both Mr. Jones and Mr. Chase testified as to what they saw in the video. But since we didn't have the video, the judge decided in her... She would not consider that testimony about what they saw on the video, since we didn't have the video. So I thought that was a very fair way to deal with it, and certainly, there's nothing therein that is not supported by substantial competent evidence in the record.
Seeing no comments from the public or the Board, I will entertain a motion on Item 34.
I move that the Board reject this exception and believe that the competent substantial evidence supports this specific findings of fact, and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
Second. Please vote. On Agenda Item 34, the Board has voted 5-0 to reject the exception to the recommended order, Page 14 to 15, Finding of Fact 41. Agenda Item 35, regarding the recommended order, Page 15, Finding of Fact Number 42, Ms. Deal did not testify. Instead, she offered the testimony of Madison Byrd, her daughter and a Sarasota High student, in an attempt to establish that Ms. Deal's actions during the incident were justified and appropriate. Ms. Byrd claimed she was in the front office. According to Ms. Byrd, Ms. Burks was the only person yelling, and her mother did not say anything to Ms. Burks. Ms. Byrd admitted she walked into the front office in the middle of the situation. She also heard the nurse ask Ms. Deal to call security. You file an exception to this finding?
Well, Ms. Byrd, her testimony was credible, and you can hear it in the recording. I mean, I did reference that, even though they axed it, because they don't want it heard, obviously, because it is so credible. And they... Even Mr. Robinson had somewhere put, Ms. Byrd and Ms. Burks had an issue in middle school, which is not true at all. She never had a class or anything with Ms. Burks. She only knew her because that was the first physical altercation my daughter had ever seen, and it was at middle school, and it happened to be with Ms. Burks. And she just pointed that out in her testimony, and they decided not to use it. And the student, the powers and the duties for student welfare, I was exercising my rights by having a student removed, an unruly student, removed from the area. And the nurse did tell me to call, the one they didn't call for testimony, again, who was an eyewitness to the entire incident. Yes, she did tell me to call security, and I did. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
I actually almost file an exception to this myself, so I'm not sure why she's filing. It was her own daughter that testified. The judge is just recounting some of that testimony, and quite frankly, it's all favorable to Ms. Deal, so I don't know what the issue here is with it. But it is supported by substantial competent evidence in the testimony that Ms. Byrd gave at the hearing. I think the issue that Ms. Deal has is actually the next one that you'll consider, which is what the judge did with it.
Actually, I have issue with this, because it says, "Instead of testifying," which I did give my deposition, I did, which is part of the record, "she offered her daughter's testimony," which is not true. My daughter wanted to be there and wanted to testify. She wrote a handwritten statement that was nowhere to be found. It was gone.
Objection that has nothing to do with this finding of fact.
Well, it does, because it's going to be part of the record. Thank you.
Seeing no request to speak from the public or the Board, I will entertain a motion on Agenda Item 35. Tom, I think it's your turn.
Oh, yeah, it's this one, for sure.
I make a motion, the Board reject this exception if it believes that the competent substantial evidence supports this specific finding of fact, and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Please vote. On Agenda Item Number 35, the Board voted 5-0 to reject Ms. Deal's exception to the recommended order, Page 15, Finding of Fact 42. We move on to Item Number 36. Item 36 is regarding the recommended order, Page 15, Finding of Fact 43. Ms. Byrd's testimony was subject to bias because her familiar and financial ties to the respondent. Ms. Byrd also indicated she disliked Ms. Burks because of something that happened in the middle school. The undersigned finds, to the extent Ms. Byrd's testimony was inconsistent with Massey's testimony, Ms. Massey's testimony is more reliable and corroborated into evidence. Ms. Deal has filed an exception to that? Ms. Deal?
Absolutely. If her testimony was rejected from these proceedings, they brought this back up, okay? So Ms. Byrd's testimony, I don't know if they put it in the transcript. It is another reason that I recorded the whole proceedings myself. So if you want to hear my, Ms. Byrd's true testimony, you'll listen to the recording at the minutes that I have on the next page. And she never indicated she disliked Ms. Burks, ever. She didn't even know her except as being taken away in administrative behavior, well, she had bad behavior and would be taken away. And like I said, that was the first altercation that Ms. Byrd had ever seen, and it happened in middle school, and it just happened to be Ms. Burks. It was just the... That's just the way it happened. So, other than that, they had no classes together or anything of that nature, and she had no reason to dislike her. She just set the fact down that she saw her in an altercation several times, and she was taken away by administration.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. The judges are sometimes put in the position of having to weigh conflicting evidence. In this case, it was conflicting testimony. I pointed out during cross-examination that not only is this Ms. Byrd's daughter, but she also lives with Ms. Byrd and is financially dependent upon Ms... I'm sorry, she lives with Ms. Deal and is financially dependent upon her. So those are classic reasons why a judge would look at something, particularly testimony from a family member, and say, "That's probably less credible because of those issues than it would be from a retired New York City police officer who testified clearly about what they saw at the hearing." So on that basis, I think it's more than substantiated by evidence in the record. And probably just as importantly, it's the ALJ's responsibility to judge the credibility of witnesses, not the agency's responsibility, because she sat first line, she saw it, she heard it, and it's her position to be able to judge those credibilities. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Deal?
Yes, I'd like to point out that that was hearsay that the ALJ heard. It was not... Besides Ms. Byrd's testimony, which, like I said, if you would listen to it in the recording, you will see that it refutes what Mr. Robinson has here regarding the dislike of the student and those kind of things. It was just erroneous, the way that they took this whole incident from my... Yes, my daughter does live with me. Of course she does. She makes more money than I do, unfortunately. She works out at Shore. She makes $500 a day, almost. So she makes more money than I do after 20 years, you know? So does she financially really? No, she doesn't. She's got her own money, and she does pay me rent. So I want to put that out there. She does pay me rent every month, and she pays for other things. So, thank you.
And again, you know, we have to base it on the facts and the law.
Yeah, I understand, but I just want to put out that she definitely does not depend on me financially, ever. So, yeah.
Thank you.
As a matter of fact, I depend on her sometimes.
I see no request from the public or the Board. I'll entertain a motion on Agenda Item 36.
I move that the Board reject this exception and believe that competent substantial evidence supports this specific findings of fact, and that the proceedings upon... and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
Moved and seconded. On agenda item 36, the board has voted 5-0 to reject the exception to the recommended order, page 15, finding of fact 43. We move now to agenda item 37, which is the recommended order, page 15, number 44. On November 15, 2018, Principal Jones met with Ms. Deal in winegarden meeting to address an incident. Meeting, the respondent took no personal responsibility, attempted to lay blame on Ms. Burks, and denied yelling. Similarly, the final hearing, Ms. Deal presented no evidence that she accepted some responsibility or that her behavior was appropriate and justified under the circumstances. Ms. Deal has written an exception to this finding of fact.
Yes, ma'am. Unfortunately, the film would show body language of Ms. Burks to show that she was being physically aggressive. None of these folks, once again, who are claiming all this and saying that there's evidence and that it's all lawful, saw any of this or were involved. So once again, it's all hearsay. They destroyed the film, so you couldn't tell from that. And I did not accept any responsibility because I was attacked. How would I accept responsibility to that? But Mary Belvin might be able to clear some of that up, however, she was never called. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. I think we -- all of this is supported by substantial competent evidence. The winegarden notes are in evidence. I think it's exhibits 49 and 50 and 52. There's also testimony with regard to this in the transcript. I think it's from Mr. Jones in pages 171 through 178. I think this is where the judge expressed frustration at the fact she refused to testify because this would have given a lot of opportunity for a lot of questions to be answered, or maybe not. But that's, I think this is where the judge is expressing that frustration. And I will say that in looking at the entire breadth of her employment record with the district and all of the MOIs and all of the discipline, never, not once, did she ever take responsibility for a single solitary thing. Never. And that holds true today. Thank you.
Ms. Deal to respond?
None of these people, none of these, Mr. Jones, even in the winegarden minute meeting, meeting minutes, none of them saw anything. That's not substantial evidence to me. If you don't see it and you're counting on hearsay, how can that even? In administrative law, yes, there is a hearsay rule, but it can't be a basis for this. And Judge Desai is the one who put the transcript on as part of her record. If you read her recommended order, she said that she based this on the law, the transcripts, Mr. Robinson's transcript of my deposition. Depending on my verbal, you know, deposition in front of the tribunal, it's all in the transcript. If she counted on the transcript, she should have referred that to the transcript in the transcript from Mr. Robinson's deposition of me. And in the transcript, it does say it. So if anyone wants to look at the transcript, I promise you, it does say that Ms. Burks is the one who started yelling and who was removed from the office. It says it in the transcripts. I just don't have them verse and line, but I will next time. Trust me, I promise. But it is in the transcript, and she did rely on the transcript for this recommended order. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no request to speak from the public or the board, I will entertain a motion on agenda item 37.
I move the board reject this exception if it believes that competent substantial evidence supports this specific finding of fact and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
Second.
On agenda item 37, the board has voted 5-0 to reject the exception to the recommended order, page 15, finding of fact 44. Agenda item number 38, recommended order, page 15, finding of fact 45. On November 30, 2018, Principal Jones recommended termination of respondent's employment based upon Ms. Deal's past disciplinary history for unprofessional conduct in the workplace and the incident. Ms. Deal, you have an exception to that?
Yes, ma'am. I never saw this letter until it was put into these proceedings, ever. It was never presented to me, once again, stating the personnel file maintenance, 231.291 personnel files. I never got a copy of this. I never saw this. He sent this to Aljareda without my knowledge. It's not signed, once again. I'm looking at it. It's not signed by Mr. Jones, even though I'm sure he did send it. But, you know, the rules are clear. The rules on that are clear. You know, I need to see what you're putting into my file or even the one here, human resources. I need to see it. The rules are clear on that. But nobody showed me this piece of paper. However, the judge says, okay, let's put it in. It's evidence. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
I think the question is whether there's substantial competent evidence to support paragraph 45, and that exhibit does. And that is the first of the recommendations. It is a recommendation to the HR. From there, the recommendation goes to the superintendent. From there, the superintendent recommends to you all. So there's dominoes of how a recommendation for termination eventually winds up in front of you. This is just the first step. But there is substantial competent evidence that Mr. Jones did make a recommendation to HR for her termination. And that is exhibit 45, 55, 54.
All these numbers.
Yeah, too many numbers.
All right. Yeah, I think I saw that when I read that. I see no request to speak from the public or the board. I will entertain a motion on item 38.
I move that the board reject this exception as there is competent substantial evidence to support this specific finding of fact and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirement of law. Second.
The motion has been made and seconded on agenda item 38. On agenda item 38, the board votes 5-0 to reject the exception to the recommended order on page 15, finding of fact 45. Agenda item 39, the recommended order, page 16, finding of fact 47. It is clear that the testimony and evidence at the hearing that Ms. Deal and Ms. Burks were involved in a shouting match in the front office that could be heard by other parents and staff, et cetera. You have?
Yes, ma'am. Clear from what testimony? That's the part I don't understand. There is no real -- like, once again, none of these people were present, so there is no clear evidence of anything or clear testimony because they weren't present when this incident took place. And here, once again, are the witness statements from Ms. Belvin, supposedly, who didn't testify, once again, and two different hand scripts for Mr. Jones' signature, once again. And why did they not call her? It's all hearsay testimony. There's not one reliable piece of evidence that we were shouting at each other. And the only thing that would have proved this is the missing film that I still believe is somewhere in our archives. I believe it to this day unless it was maliciously deleted. And it had to be malicious. If this comes down, it will be a part of tampering, once again, with evidence. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. Well, there's absolutely no evidence of any tampering of any kind. Just saying it over and over again doesn't make it so. Paragraph 47 is supported directly by the testimony of Denise Massey, the security aide that the judge found credible. She specifically heard the screaming that was going on between the two. And as a matter of fact, if you read that testimony, she pleads with Ms. Deal to stop talking, to allow her, in her job as security aide, to deescalate the situation in order to get people to calm down because there were people there besides just personnel. There was parents in the room there. And Ms. Deal refused to comply with that instruction from the security aide. So it was on that basis that Ms. Massey had no other choice but to grab the student and leave the room in order to deescalate the situation. So all of that is supported in the testimony. And then it's corroborated by the witness statements that were provided contemporaneous at the time of the people who were actually in the room and witnessed it themselves. And so there is substantial, more than substantial competent evidence to support paragraph 47.
I just want to state that there isn't that evidence. It does not exist, and everything in here is falsified documents. And if you, when he says there's no evidence of tampering, when you see two different signatures not signed, you see two different witness statements, one signed, one not -- there's something going on somewhere. That's my case. And I promise you that there is evidence of tampering. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no request to speak from the public or the board, I will entertain a motion on agenda item 39.
I move the board reject this exception and believe that competent substantial evidence supports this specific finding of fact and that the proceedings upon which the findings were based complies with the essential requirements of law.
Second.
On agenda item 39, the board has voted 5-0 to reject the exception to the recommended order, page 16, finding of fact 47. Agenda item number 40.
This begins the section conclusions of law.
This is the conclusion of law now?
Yes, ma'am. We're now in that section of the RO.
Thank you. This is in regard to the recommended order, page 17, finding of law, item 57. The school board bears the burden of proving a preponderance of evidence of the alleged misconduct occurred and just case exists to terminate respondent's employment. A preponderance of evidence is the evidence that more than likely than not tends to prove the proportion proposition set forth as a proponent. And there's some sightings there. Ms. Deal?
Yes, ma'am. In one of my pleadings to the court, I did ask for judicial notice of the Florida statutes that I have been stating here regarding tampering and conspiracy. I asked for judicial notice. She is not equipped in that tribunal to deal with those issues of law because, once again, although hearing officers are entitled to substantial deference, they are judicial generalists. They are not, who are trained in the law but not necessarily in specific professions. So, and this is a slip opinion from Pam Bondi, okay? I'm not making this stuff up. I promise you, I'm not making it up. So everything in here with the discrepancies of the unsigned documents, the missing film footage, the discrepancies in the signatures not signed, are signed. That is where I'm going to stand on the law with this. The preponderance of the evidence was not met, in my opinion, anywhere in these proceedings. I just want that out there on the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. I think all Judge Desai is doing here is stating what the burden, what the burden the district had was, which is preponderance of the evidence. Later on, she makes a determination of whether we met that burden, but this is just a reiteration of what the law is. And Ms. Deal has not pointed out to any law that says the standard is not preponderance of the evidence. And having done these for 32 years here and elsewhere, it is preponderance of the evidence.
And I believe you also stated in the comment that under a legal standard, we have to find a legal standard that, to review them, that they were clearly erroneous, the findings of the judge?
That is what the case law has interpreted, subsection L. that I read to you earlier, where it talked about rejecting conclusions of law. So that is a pretty heightened standard in order to show that the burden is not preponderance of it. You'd have to come up with a case that says it's something else. I don't know what something else would be. It's not clear and convincing. There are criminal standards that would be inapplicable here beyond a reasonable doubt. That's not, that's not applicable here. There isn't really anything lower than preponderance of the evidence that I can think of because if it's less than 50%, you lose. So that's about as low as the standard could get. But it is, we sided the cases, the judges sided the cases. I mean, it is what it is.
Thank you. Seeing no request to speak from the public or the board, I will entertain a motion on agenda item 40.
I move that the board reject the exception and believe that the specific conclusion of law, that is, that subject of this exception is
Second.
On agenda item number 40, the board has voted 5-0 to reject the exception to recommended order, page 17, paragraph 53, is it, or how would I?
It is, paragraph 53.
Agenda item 41, recommended order, page 17 to 14. Item 54, initial matter, the undersigned must determine whether Ms. Deal's conduct constitute just cause for dismissal.
Once again, there's nothing in the record to support any of this. That's going to be my stance. That's going to be what I take out of this case. It's based strictly on hearsay and erroneous exhibits that should never have, in my opinion, accepted by the court, however she did, and that's her thing. But if I was the judge, I would not have accepted half of this, and that's the truth. So it's erroneous, and the entire case is based on hearsay. There's not one bit of evidence because there's nobody here that testified or saw the incident that they're claiming.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, this is just the judge providing what the standard is for termination. It's not, later on, she makes a determination that there was just cause. But here, she's just regurgitating that the standard is just cause, and just cause is defined in the administrative code section, and she actually quotes it verbatim. So that's all this section does. So it is a correct statement that just cause is required, and I'm pretty sure she got the quote right out of the, out of the administrative code section.
Well, it does say legally sufficient. That's why I did it, because she doesn't have any legally, in my opinion, sufficient evidence to support any of this. So that's why I did an exception. Thank you.
Seeing no request to speak from the public or the board, I will entertain a motion on agenda item 41.
I move the board reject this exception as it believes that the specific conclusion of law, that is, the subject of this exception is reasonable.
Moving on, oh, the board has voted 5-0 to reject agenda item 42. I've already gone. I turned the page. That is a recommended order, page 17 to 18, number 54. That is recommended order, page 17 to 18, number 54. Item 42, Agenda, item 42, recommended order, page 18 to 19, item number 56, the principles provided guidance to educational employees on how they should act and state in a relevant part, and list the principles of professional conduct for education.
And at no time was I unprofessional during this. And, once again, if we had the film, it would show I was stoic. I did not move. I have worked with ESE students for seven years. I understand behavior problems. I mean, I used to have students come to my office for timeouts for behavior problems. I understand behavior problems. This child was nowhere near in danger at any given time, which is number five. I did not embarrass her, I did not disparage her. She was not in danger, conditions harmful. The only thing, she was, might have been harmful to herself and to me had she had continued on being allowed to be in that room without security assistance to remove her. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. I believe Judge Desai is merely quoting section 6A, point 10, point 081, which are the professionals, principles of professional conduct. Later on, she makes findings relative to that, but this is just a quote from the actual administrative rule.
Well, it's saying how employees should act. And I just want you to know, I didn't act this way. And that's, she's given you the outline there. I didn't act in any way, shape, or form unprofessional.
Thank you. Seeing no comment from the public, a request to speak from the public or the board, I will entertain a motion on item 42.
I move the board reject this exception in belief that the specific conclusion of law, that is the subject of this exception, is reasonable.
Second.
Please vote. On item 42, the board has voted 5-0 to reject the exception on the recommended order, page 18 to 19, item 56. Item 43. I went too far. Recommended order, page 18 to 19, number 56, the principal provide guidance to education. Is it the same one? I guess it's similar.
It's the same one. It's another exception to it.
Sorry.
You have another exception to the same?
Yeah, well, it's just, I don't, yeah, I don't even understand why we have two of these. But I did make an exception because she, the student was out of control. Nobody disparaged her, embarrassed her. As a matter of fact, she had the same behavior two months later towards Assistant Principal Mark Gillan, who did testify, but he didn't testify to this specifically, because I shut the thing down. But he did have her suspended for the same behavior two months later. And this, you know, but yeah, the same behavior begets me firing from my school or termination. The same behavior. She yelled at Mr. Gillan in front of 100 students in the cafeteria. He had her suspended for three days. She comes and yells at me, and I get in trouble. So I don't understand the fairness of that. Just wanted to throw that out there. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Yeah, I asked the board to disregard that testimony. It was not part of the official record. I don't know what happened to this student afterwards. None of us do. And it really shouldn't have been said, quite frankly, because it is outside the record. And reiterate, this is just a quotation out of the administrative rules section is all this is.
I believe there is a mention in that, however, in the transcript of my deposition that she was suspended three weeks later, and that is part of the record.
All right. What we're talking about right now is the item that lists what the principles of professional conduct are. There's nobody else's reference in here at this time, anybody's actions. I see no comment from the public or the board. I will entertain a motion.
I move that the board reject this exception and believe that the specific conclusion of law, that is the subject of this exception, is reasonable.
Second.
Please vote. The board has voted on item 43 to reject the exception to page 18 to 19, number 56. Moving on to Agenda Item 44, in regards to recommended order, page 20, item 59, rule 6A dash 10, point 081, parent 2A, 21, required Ms. Deal to make a reasonable effort to protect Ms. Burks from conditions harmful to learning and towards the student's mental and/or physical health and safety. Ms. Deal's behavior during this incident violated the principle.
Yeah, they'd never proved this statement, because, once again, none of them were there. None of them saw this and relied on hearsay for this entire testimony, for this entire proceedings. There's just no, there's just no foundation, there's no basis for any of this case. I mean, they, there's just none. And they are just relying on testimony of people who make more money than I do. So, I mean, but you can't rely on that, because it's not, it's not proper testimony. I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. This is in the conclusion of law section. It is where the judge takes the law and the facts and applies them, and reaches conclusions about what she found. And here, she applies the administrative code section that deals with an employee's obligations toward the student, particularly the student's mental or physical health and/or safety. And on the basis of the facts that we've gone through, that the judge found, she made a determination that Ms. Deal's behavior during the incident violated this principle. So it is in the conclusions of law section. It is supported, that is a correct statement of the administrative code section, and that is the judge's application of the law to the facts, which we would have to show is clearly erroneous, which it is not. Thank you.
Seeing no request to speak from the public or the board, I will entertain a motion on Agenda Item 44.
I move that the board reject this exception as it believe that the specific conclusion of law, that this is the subject of, this exception is reasonable.
Second.
Please vote. The board has voted 5-0 to reject the exception to recommended order, page 20, number 59, Agenda Item 54. Moving on to Agenda Item 45. Regarding recommended order, page 20, number 60, finally, rule 6A dash 10, point 081, parent 2, parent A, 5, provides that one shall not intentionally expose a student to unnecessary embarrassment or disparagement. Ms. Deal's behavior during the incident towards Ms. Burke in the presence of others violated this principle. Ms. Deal?
Once again, she has no evidence of that. There's no evidence to support this. These people weren't here. They didn't see anything. I'm going to just stay with that. There's no factual evidence or witnesses. Like I said, they didn't call the only witness to the entire thing, Mary Belvin, which, say it again, it's very suspect, that he didn't call the only witness. So I never disparaged, belittled any child. I don't do, I have five children. You know, I understand children and their behavior. I'm not going to disparage a child. You learn to speak to them, not to disparage them. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
I would just repeat my comments from the last one, because this one's identical to that one.
Yep. Seems like we've got a lot of them going on. They're both just repetitious.
Thank you. Seeing no request to speak from the public or the board, I will entertain a motion on item 45.
I make a motion that we reject this exception in belief that the specific conclusion of law, that this, the subject of this exception, is reasonable.
Second.
Please vote. On Agenda Item 45, the board has voted 5-0 to reject the exception to the recommended order, page 20, item 60. Moving on to item 46, Agenda Item 46, in regards to recommended order, page 20 to 21, item number 65, respondent's attempt to rehash what happened to warrant her previous disciplines is barred from the doctrine of administrating finality, which holds that agency orders must become final and no longer subject to change or modification, et cetera.
Yes, ma'am. This is not a final, it's not final. And the petitioner is the one who consistently relied on evidence from my past. They opened that door. They are the ones who submitted the 2010 only employee evaluation I ever had one time. And if I'm such a bad employee, why didn't I get one of those every three years? But there's nothing to prove these folks' case. And ALJ, I really, I really believe she does know that, but, you know, she can put her final order in, and she's done with the case. That's fine. But there's nothing here to substantiate any of, this past discipline thing was all them, not me. And if they open the door, I should be able to explore that avenue. Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. I believe this is a correct statement of the law as it relates to the doctrine of administrative finality, cites to cases that I've reviewed and confirmed that that this administrative doctrine exists. It's similar to what we refer to as res judicata in the state and federal court systems. And I don't believe, I believe this exception, or this, I believe this, paragraph 65 is correct and reasonable. Thank you.
Seeing no request to speak from the public or the board, I will entertain a motion.
I move that the board reject this exception if it believes that the specific conclusion of law, that is the subject of this exception, is reasonable.
Second.
Please vote. On Agenda Item number 46, recommended order, page, am I on 46 or 45?
46.
46.
Forty, I thought it was 47.
46, 47 is next.
Forty-six was the, wasn't that what we just went over? I'm sorry. The administrative finality with the disciplines? If not, I mean, like...
You just did Agenda Item 46. That's what you just voted on.
Correct.
But you'll notice Agenda Item 47 looks awfully similar, because it is, it's the same.
Well, I guess that's why I get confused.
Yep.
So, item 46, the board has voted 5-0 to reject...
Is there any, is everyone satisfied that they voted on 46?
Yes.
If not, let's redo it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I clicked the wrong button, and I lost my page here. All right, item 47, then, is recommended order, page 20 to 21, number 65, respondent's attempt to rehash what happened to warrant her previous disciplines is barred by the doctrine of administrative finality, which holds that the agency orders must become, I think this is similar, Ms. Deal?
Um, I think this was back to 46? I'm sorry. I just found something on 46, on page 60. Well, it's not numbered 64. I numbered it 64 of Mr. Dugan's agenda.
And that's why I'm trying to cite the places I know...
Right, right. Well, this, I mean, this states that Judge Desai admitted this case was out of her jurisdiction. Ms. Deal argues that due process, as she understands, was not met. I'm assuming Mr. Robinson wrote that, or Mr., somebody wrote it, because I didn't. I just wanted to point that out, that Judge Desai admitted that. Thank you. And on to 47, is that what we're on, correct?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. To warrant, I think that's the exact same thing, and she lacks jurisdiction over the scope of this hearing. The scope is much broader than the administrative law judges are knowledgeable in, and that's why I asked for the judicial notice I asked for, so I could get an answer for those. And she kind of just like, oh, we can't go over those in the hearing, you know, I don't, I can't, because I'm not judicially qualified to, you know, rule on those. So if you're not, why don't, once again, if you're not judicially qualified to hear the scope of the case, why don't you go ahead and just throw it to the next tribunal, instead of me having to go through all this until we get to the next tribunal? But it states right there on page 64, that Judge Desai admitted this case is out of her jurisdiction. So if it is, why are, you know...
I will see that this was filed dated 3/2.
That's correct.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am. This exception was filed late. It does not have to be considered by you. You can consider it, but you don't have to consider it. At no time did Judge Desai admit that this case was outside her jurisdiction. These cases, when the employee requested administrative hearing, it's not like, let's make a deal. There aren't three different doors that you can choose from to go through. When you elect to appeal a termination of your employment from a school board, you're going to go through door number one. And you don't get to decide what's in door number one. But that's where it says that you have a vested property right to your job. That's where it says that we have to prove just cause for your termination. That's where it says what just cause means, all the different things that you, as an employee, could do that would justify. The employee doesn't get to decide all that. So I'm sorry, Ms. Deal thinks that somehow she got a raw deal. But the fact of the matter is, when she elected this type of administrative appeal, those are the standards that we, the judge, you, are all set by. And we really don't have any choice. It's just cause, it's all out there. And I think that paragraph 65 is a correct statement of the law.
Ms. Deal?
Yes, which, which, what he, to expound on what he's saying, that's true. That's all they can do in that tribunal. They do not have, they do not have the ability to rule on the real scope of this case. They are limited. So he is correct in saying that. So we might just be in the wrong, the wrong court, and it must have been in the, that's why I filed a motion, asked for a motion for mistrial, because she is not in her jurisdiction. And she knew that from the onset, after I started presenting all my evidence. So with that being said, we are in the wrong tribunal. And everything she's put in here is true, that most of it, most of it, I don't mean, I'm not going to agree with all of it. However, what she didn't say is the preponderance of the evidence was not met, and it wasn't because of the erroneous submissions that the petitioner did on his, they're just, they're not correct.
Seeing no request to speak from the public or the board, I will entertain a motion.
I move the board reject this exception if it believes that the specific conclusion of law, that is the subject of this exception, is reasonable.
Second.
Please vote. On Agenda Item 47, the board has voted 5-0 to reject, am I seeing, 5-0 to reject the exceptions to the recommended order, page 20, 21, number 65. And the...
If I may, regarding number 48, you'll see that it is identical to 47, except for when, so we received two different documents on March 2nd from Ms. Deal. One is, became 47, and in abundance of caution, I put the other in, in 48. They are, from a content standpoint, identical, at best I can tell. There was some stylistic differences regarding how she signed them and what she put at the bottom of them. That was not part of the content. So like I said, in abundance of caution, I included both of them, but I believe them to be identical to one another.
And I would concur with that. It is identical, and you've already made a determination on this previously.
All right. So it's Agenda Item 48, recommended order, 20, 21, number 65. Ms. Deal, did you have anything to add?
No, ma'am. It's, it looks identical. I concur.
Seeing no comments from the public or the board, I will entertain a motion.
I move for the board to reject this exception... I move for the board to reject this exception and believe that the specific conclusion of law that is the subject of this exception is reasonable. Second.
On agenda item number 48, regarding recommended order 2020, on page 20 to 21, number 65, the board has rejected the exception. We now move to item 49, which is the recommended order from the judge. I think we have to have a motion, or...
I would recommend, since this is Ms. Deal's hearing, that we give her the opportunity to make any closing remarks or offer anything else that, you know, she hasn't come up during one of these exceptions. I think that would be appropriate, to permit her that opportunity, since it is her opportunity to challenge this.
Okay. Do you have any closing remarks, Ms. Deal?
I think that I, you know, I've made my case pretty clear on where I stand with everything, and I have presented evidence today to refute this entire case against me. If by chance they, you recommend I am terminated, I understand that. I will, you know, obviously have to appeal, but I will appeal. And I did write to the board, well, at least three of you. The other ones, no, because you weren't here. And I threw down my allegations, which, towards Mr. Jones. None of you responded, nobody. These were, this was when my email was down, but Ms. Brown did respond to me to prove that at least the emails do work, because I sent it to the same address that I sent the letters to. I sent two letters to the board, two, to each, to each one of you regarding Mr. Jones and the tampering. It's, it's the law for you all to investigate that, or at least respond to me. And no one had the courtesy to even respond to me. And I feel really rejected by that, and I feel, you know, that, that nobody even respected me enough to answer me. That was, that was a pretty hard pill to swallow, that no one, not one of you responded to my allegations against David Jones.
Ms. Deal? We are advised by our attorney to not respond when there is an active case going on, because it is...
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
We are supposed to stay hands off, because it may come before us that we have to make a decision. So we can't be showing...
Well, but it's, but it's in the, I did the law, and I quoted the absolute statute that states that the board is responsible to do a thorough investigation of the allegations within a certain period of time. Didn't happen. Whether your lawyer said to do it or not, that's, you know, just like me, ignorance of the law, it can get you in trouble, but it's, you know, that is part of another reason for, for this thing going like it did. Had the, had the allegations maybe been investigated, this might have gone a different direction. But no, we're going to make David Jones, who I alleged tampering with evidence and conspiracy and all that other stuff, we're going to make him principal of the year. And I just want to throw that out there. Why are we going to do that? It's indicative of this board. I'm sorry, but it used to be more indicative. What can we do? Run ourselves up a tree and become a director, or maybe get busted on the school grounds here at the landings and become a league custodian? I mean, like, there's so many things out there that are not justified, the way they're handled. And I don't know the pertinent details of any of that. And honestly, I just hear these from other people. But to be totally ignored by this board, and by your lawyer, he should have at least responded if he was not going to allow you to respond. And I don't know if that's why Mr. Dugan is now sitting in that chair. I have no clue about that. All I know is the lawyer that was here is not. And he should have responded, or someone should have responded, because it was a legal, it was a legal piece of paper that I sent to you. So with that said, making your determination today is what you're going to do. And I know everything's been rejected, and I was going to bring it into compliance. I told Mr. Dugan that. However, like I said, the response was, I can't advise you. I didn't ask for advice. I just told him I was going to do it. And then on Sunday at the end hour, he's like, are you going to submit? You know, so regardless, this whole thing, like I said, is hearsay. There's not one piece of evidence, and there's so much jacked up evidence, that they'll have a field day with it. It will be, it will be something of great proportions, is what I'm assuming. I mean, people are going to look at this and go, oh, this is one for the books, maybe. I don't know. Hopefully not, but I'm just saying. I asked for judicial notice, and I asked for the board to just be respectful enough to answer me. And none of that happened. So, you know, I feel like I've been wronged in this whole entire suit. Mr. Robinson has been nothing but rude to me since day one, even at the deposition. And I'm telling him this at his face, so I'm not making innuendos. He's slamming evidence down, bam, and yelling. No, see, this is why I didn't want to deal with this part of it today, because I have had nothing but angst against this man, and he's been nothing but rude to me since day one. So with that said, we can finish the case. Y'all can make your recommendation, and I will go home. Thank you so much for your time today, and I appreciate that we are here still at whatever time it is. And I'm very tired, 5:33. So I'm just saying. So do what you will, but you've heard my side of this story, and I wasn't trying to relitigate it. I was just trying to give you my side of the story, because with Mr. Robinson objecting to me every five seconds, I had no opportunity, I felt, to get my case in, because every question I asked was shot down, and I didn't appreciate it. So I was exhausted by day three of his objections. I was ready to go home at that point. And that's why I shut that down, Mr. Edwards, just to let them know. So I appreciate your time today, and your decision is your decision, but thank you so much.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes, thank you. The school board satisfied its burden in this case to show that Ms. Deal was guilty of misconduct based upon the incident of November the 2nd of 2018. The school board likewise satisfied its burden to show that not only did that happen, but that misconduct constituted just cause for termination of her employment. The school district also, in this case, their sort of high school, followed the progressive discipline module that's required under the collective bargaining agreement. And if this all began in 2016, you know, it did not culminate for nearly two and a half years later with the last incident. And under that module, the next step in discipline after her suspension without pay is termination. So that is the disciplinary action that Judge Desai recommended. It is the disciplinary action that I, on behalf of the administration in Sarasota High, ask you to affirm in that recommended order.
Do we have a motion, so we can present this to a motion, so we can make any discussion?
Do we want to have any discussion, or just a motion?
Well, we have to, all right, if you want to have discussion before you make a motion, but normally you make a motion and then discuss it. We can discuss it first, if you like.
Well, I think in this situation, maybe discussing it first.
Okay. I don't see anybody queued up, but as soon as somebody pushes, I will call you.
I think discussion, general discussion's fine. At some point, we need a motion and a second to proceed.
Granted.
But I think general discussion, and I also think if anyone from the public wants to weigh in too, that would be fine also.
I would like to make some comments on this, and I think maybe because of this, I might need to hand the chairmanships over while I'm making this, these comments. No, you cannot hit me with it. You know, we have laid out in law, and in our policies, and in our collective bargaining agreement, what has to happen in a process like this. I did receive your emails, and I looked at it, and I'm like, oh my, what's this? And I talked to our attorney, and they said, this is a case that is going on, and we need to stand back, because it may come before us in the future. So, and so we, of course, I'm like, what do you mean? How come we can't answer? But because it just today is why we not supposed to respond. You know, when these things are decided upon, you know, by the rules, by the laws, and court is by law, not emotion, and that's why sometimes it's helpful to have an attorney who understands the law, understands the process, there to give you advice on how to proceed. And, and it has to be based on facts, not opinion, and we go forward. And the first thing I looked at when I saw, and I did, I've been reading this, my husband's been making jokes about it, progressive discipline. Was there progressive discipline, or, you know, before we fire someone, I understand that, you know, there's memorandums of understanding, and then there's, you talk to somebody, put something in their file. The next step is, you can suspend somebody. And I understand there might have been, you grieved the one for three days, and it went down to two. But some of these other, the memorandum of understanding, and that first, you didn't grieve those. So we can't, just as the judge couldn't rehear the facts of those Weingarten hearings at that meeting, at the, at the trial, we can't hear them now. The time to discuss those facts was at those hearings. We can't hear it now. And again, you know, perhaps legal advice might help you on that. But I saw that the progressive discipline went through. I believe that whether or not you were able to present your case, or you got frustrated, I can feel sorry for you, but I can't fine for you. I mean, I have to base my decision today on the facts before me, and what the law says, what our rules and policies are, and I believe those were followed. I will take the chairmanship back and call on Ms. Ziegler.
Thank you. And thank you for the time. I know this is not an easy process, and as Mrs. Brown and even Mr. Edwards mentioned, is that there are a lot of nuances. And our role in this current moment is to evaluate it based on the process, the procedures, and as they've been laid out. I, and I think, I share what Mr. Edwards had said before, is wanting to be able to hear more, but from a procedural standpoint, just because of the, from the legality standpoint in that, in the fact that there was no, that you did not testify, and hearing you today, and I can understand that, that feeling of not wanting to, but the process of it all is very challenging and complex. And while, yes, attorneys can absolutely help you navigate it all, I understand that they're not always financially feasible for everyone. So, I mean, so I take that very, very seriously, recognize that challenge, and commend anyone who, who approaches this on their own and tries to navigate it and teach, you know, learn through as they go through it. But with that said, to Mrs. Brown's point, having to look at it as it is, with all of the variable legalities too, when, you know, on bringing up or relitigating prior items that had already been closed are not eligible for us to bring forward and actually evaluate it at that point. So I appreciate the time, and it's never an easy decision to be in this position, but that was the biggest challenge as we evaluate it from, from the legal standpoint, so thank you.
This has been a hard day, and I know it's been especially hard for you, Ms. Deal. And, you know, I, I think you have a lot of huts, but to be here. I've never done one of these before. We've never had one in the 10 years, 11 years I've been on the board. And this is a big thick book that I spent a lot of time reading the testimony of, and I think a lot of other board members did as well. And I take this very, very seriously. And I will be voting in support of the recommendations of the administrative law judge in recommending termination. And I do this with a hard, heavy heart, because I think that you could have...
You gotta do what you gotta do, so, and I understand that.
But I'm, but I'm saying I don't like doing this, and I wish you all the very best. You have a lot of talent that you've exhibited today in tenacity in going about this, so, you know, perhaps there are some, some takeaways that we have. You know, Florida has a right-to-work law, and a lot of corporations, if you do something wrong, you know, snap, you're gone. So, you know, this has been a process that's taken time, and of course, with pandemic and some of your situations, you know, it's taken longer than perhaps it normally would have. But I want to wish you the very best, and I apologize for not getting back to you, but again, I thought it was important that I not get back to you, because I had not read and gone through this, and we're having this meeting today, and was in all intention of making sure that I was handling this in the most professional way. So that is, that is the way that I am looking at this, and as I say again, I wish you all the very best.
Mr. Edwards?
I just want to echo that, you know, I did, I read everything thoroughly and with an open mind. Having built and sold two businesses, employees were key to me. So I, I looked in every way, shape and form, to try and find a wiggle room out. And when it unfolds in such a way that your lack of testimony was, was hard for the judge to work around, I read in her words that she had a hard time, and, and worked as hard as she, I felt, to give you every opportunity and every benefit of the doubt, so that you could tell your story. And, and that left us in the situation where there was nothing to work with, because we have to work within the specific boundaries that are given to us to vote on today. And I just want you to know that, I concur with Mrs. Goodwin, that it's, it's hard to make that decision. And so I just wanted you to know that if it could be another way, if, if you had a fork in the road, if you had different counsel, it might have worked out differently. And I wish you well as well.
Seeing no further request to speak, I will entertain a motion on item 49.
I move to adopt the final order that adopts the board's rulings on each exception, and that accepts the recommendations of the administrative law judge in the recommended order to terminate Joy Deal based on a review of the complete record as presented.
Please vote. Oh, this is different. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get the thing up to vote. Just a minute, because I was on the queuing thing instead of the... Sorry for that. Now I have to find that, confirm. Well, I just postponed it just a few more minutes for you, Joy.
That doesn't matter. We'll see at the next level.
The board has voted 5-0 to uphold the...
It'll be more fun at the next level, anyway. That's where this is all going, you know. I don't have a choice now but to appeal, so I will appeal. And I will get that to you ASAP. I have 30 days to appeal. I do know that after the final decision, and I will get that to you ASAP. And I will ask for a stay in my employment until the time, such a time as we can have that.
And I might suggest you talk to an attorney in the interim to understand.
Well, I already, besides that, but any rate, yes. But I'm going to ask for a stay, and I am going to appeal. So I just want you all to be aware of that, so, you know, you're not cut off guard. And when I do give you my initial brief, I will ask for the stay at that point in time. So the termination, I don't know even how that goes. It's, it's not final until it's final.
Thank you.
So I just keep going to work, I'm assuming, until it's final.
I don't know how that works, but they'll have somebody speak to you for that.
I think it doesn't have to be put into some kind of format before I'm actually out the door.
Dr. Brennan, I understand... Dr. Brennan, I understand that we've got some new people in HR now, and I would like to see, you know, with your direction and the new HR, you know, that we look at some of these things so that it doesn't take two and a half years from when a recommended firing to someone to actually be. I mean, because it's expensive for all of us involved, just this hearing today, to have the district's attorney, the board attorney, and all of this, and whatever else is going to be coming from this. But this two and a half years to be in limbo, you know, I think we ought to be able to make things clearer for employees. And I know we've got, you know, the union representation. I, I can't say what happened in there with you at those meetings, but they were there. And I just think that we need to do some things to clean this up, to make it more understandable for employees as they're working through, to let them know that, you know, if, if you get a memorandum of understanding, you need to take it seriously. And, and if you start through this progressive discipline, you're going to end up, you know, being fired if you do not make those changes. So I think it's important that we somehow get that information through our HR down to our employees, so they understand at each division of this that it's important.
If I may, I just, the last step of this is to reduce the board's determinations today to a final order, and I will be doing that and preparing that and forwarding it to the board for review.
Thank you.
So do I continue to go to work, or I don't continue to go to work? Because I know there's a 30-day period in there that someone, I think, should maybe ask, or I'm asking that question, because I think that that's, that was my understanding.
Ms. Deal, this is obviously Brennan asked one. We will contact you and tell you what, what is next at this point in time. From what I understand from this, with Patrick Dugan, who will help us along with that and to make sure that we follow the right guidelines as we move forward, based on what happened today.
Ms. Deal, my legal belief at this point, based on the board's action today, is that you are terminated effective immediately.
All right, thank you.